Sanitary District to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Craven?
Here.
Director Kildy?
Here.
Director Morgan?
Here.
Secretary McDonald?
Here.
Chair Tremblay?
Present. Mr. Kildy, would you lead us in the flag seat? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kildy. All right, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
All right, are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing, none at this time. Let's go ahead and move to the consent calendar. We have minutes for February 7 and 14, respectively.
Move the approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion and a second. Please go ahead and vote. Ah, there we go, it turned to green. So I'm seeing a 5-0 vote. All right. Let's see, any departmental items? Legal counsel, any items? Comments from staff?
None.
Comments from board members? Okay, that was quick. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting in the sanitary district.
Call this meeting of the Camrio Successor Agency to order and ask the minutes to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Public comments, would anyone like to speak to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent calendar.
Okay, there's one motion by Mr. Morgan. Mr. Kildy, is that a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. No further business, any comments from staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Comments from legal counsel? Comments from council members? Okay, this meeting's adjourned and I will call to order the meeting of the Camrio City Council. And I will ask the record to reflect, excuse me, that all council members are present. We have had a request to change, under amendments to the agenda, to change, switch the positions of item 4A and 4B. Is there any objection?
4A and 4B.
So it would put the item on term limits ahead of goals.
Madam Mayor, for clarification, this is a physical accommodation request.
For a person who would like to speak to the item in case we don't finish our goals.
What if we don't finish that?
Well, then I guess goals come after the six o'clock session.
Goals will be, we'll move down to the agenda.
Is there any objection to switching the position of items 4A and 4B? Okay, then we will do that when the time comes. In the meantime, we have a presentation, and that is to one of our, if I can pick up the plaque, one of our employees, Debbie Whitlock. Will you please join me over here? You have to get centered. Okay, now that we're, now that we're centered, Debbie has been with the city for 17 years, and she has given us a lot of good, hard work through that time. She's sat through a lot of budget study sessions with us, a lot of budget sessions and other sessions, and we appreciate all the hard work you have done. She, this is a, I call it a plaque, it's actually a tile with the city logo. It says Debbie Whitlock, Budget Analyst, June 2000 to March 2018. So that's almost 18 years, almost. Anyway, Debbie, we thank you, we appreciate all the hard work, and we thank you. I want to congratulate you and wish you the very best in your retirement, and I'm going to let Mr. Norman speak a few words.
Debbie, I want to thank you for all the work you've done, and I just remember a couple years ago when we were in between finance directors, how much we needed to work together, and what a great job you did in pulling together a budget with just my direction, which is not easy many times. But thank you very much for everything you've done, and I really appreciated working with you, and you'll be sorely missed.
Now we have to have this picture taken while we're centered, I think we need to move over there, okay. And I know the council members will have things they want to say too. Mr. Kildy?
Debbie, we've, you know, we've kind of spent probably a lot of time together on these budgets through the years here, and I'm sure your husband and your friends out there could probably attest to that, but just your total professional abilities were really appreciated by myself here and I think everybody in the room here and in the community. And like Mr. Norman had said, at that time, we were kind of a little bit in between, and you took the lead to these study sessions and to our mid-year budget review. You were very professional, and that was not an easy task, and you had all of the answers on your fingertips here, and I was always really impressed. God, how does she know all that? How does she know what page to, keep in mind, those documents are about that thick, and how does she know what page just to turn to for that? But you did, and you're some of the best of the best, Debbie, and I wish, it's bittersweet for me, I'm super happy for you and your family, but I'm kind of sad for the city here too. But a job well done, and enjoy your retirement, you've earned it.
Let me go next. Mrs. McDonald?
Well, Debbie, I say this in all sincerity, please don't go. I don't know how we'll do the budget without you, but you do an amazing job, and not only are you very professional, but you're very understanding and very caring. I know sometimes you probably think, why in the world are they asking me that? But you always give us the answer, and you always have patience with us, I guess that's a good way of putting it. You've done a marvelous job, and we wish you the best in retirement, we really do. And don't count numbers anymore.
Mr. Morgan?
The question is, are you leaving Camrio? Where are you going?
Whidby Island, Washington.
Oh, my, that is a difference.
We lived up there for a number of years, so we're kind of going back home, so.
Well, we're going to miss you. You've done a great job, every committee meeting we've had, when you've had questions that we needed answers, you seem like you had it right there. I'm not going to repeat everything Kevin and Jan said, but we're going to miss you and hope, maybe there's something that will keep you here for a little longer. But you've got family up there. Congratulations.
Mr. Tremblay?
So Debbie, I'm the new member of the council, and so we haven't had too much of a chance to work together over the last year, except I have had the pleasure of knowing both you and Chuck and your family for many, many years outside of the council. During our work on the council together, I think you have been terrific. You're thoughtful, your knowledge of municipal finance is outstanding, and you are a consummate professional. So all I can do is echo what Mr. Norman has said and what the members of the council have said. We are going to miss you, and our loss is Whidby Island's gain. Thank you.
I'm not good at speaking, but I want to thank everybody, it's a team effort, and so I got support before I came to the budget study session. Whenever I needed assistance, you know, my department was there, other departments were there, whenever I asked. It's a great city, I couldn't have asked for better, almost 18 years, and I am going to miss everybody. I guess I'll get used to it, but, yeah, I just want to thank everybody and the council for the thought they put into their employees, how much the work the employees do for them, and vice versa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, best wishes.
Thank you, thank you.
We have to clap.
They can all go home now.
Oh, no, they want to stay in here all, we have to say.
No, they don't.
Next is the consent calendar.
I'll move the approval.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
I do have a question.
Mr. Tremblay.
On the consent calendar, and it has to do with item F.
Item?
Item F, as in Frank, on the Conference Center Drain Project.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Klotzel. Mr. Klotzel, there have been multiple amendments to the initial agreement and, for retention with Parsons Transportation Group, and I just want to know that, in your view, is the amount for bid and construction phase services, because that's the tack-on here with respect to the amendment, is that an appropriate amount as an add-on to the design services? And since I believe in compound questions, sorry, number one, is that appropriate as an add-on to the design services, and number two, is it appropriate as a soft cost percentage of the entire project? Because it's a big number.
Yes.
Sorry for the compound question.
Right, yeah, no, I understand, it is a, it is a big number for a seemingly simple type of project, but actually rather complex for the, for the exact work that's being done with the situation out there. So it is, you know, appropriate, we feel it's a, you know, we do need to retain the original design engineer through construction to perform those phases, phases of services, and, you know, we feel that it's, it's the fair price that we've been able to negotiate. We did negotiate this price in speaking with Parsons to cover our needs and see the project through to completion.
So, yes, Esteban?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That gets us down to section four, City Council, and we agreed to take item B before item A. So if I can get myself to the right page, we are going to first take up term limits November 2018 election resolution.
Yes, I'll be presenting on that item. This is a item relating to a term limit measure, and for the council to consider a resolution that would place a term limit measure on the November 6, 2018 ballot. By way of background, on January 24, 2018, at that council meeting, Councilmember Tremblay presented a proposed term limit ordinance, and he requested that the council consider placing that ordinance on the November 2018 ballot for consideration by the voters, for voting by the voters. So that was then placed on the agenda for discussion and action on February 14, 2018, at which time there was discussion by the council with respect to the proposed measure, and the council voted to direct staff to bring back to this meeting a resolution that would place the measure on the November ballot. The proposed measure would add a section to the Camrio Municipal Code establishing term limits for council members. If this ordinance is approved by the voters at the November election, the council members would be limited to three terms in office, as defined by the ordinance. Council members would then be required to discontinue their service after three consecutive terms. After a four-year break of service, a council member, a former council member could then rerun, if you will, or run again for office, and again, serve three consecutive terms. So basically, there would need to be a four-year break between years of service. Additionally, there, this ordinance would apply prospectively only. What that means is that if the voters approved this measure at the November election, that the three-term, consecutive term limitation would commence with the terms of those council members who are elected in November of 2018 and any subsequent elections of council members. So for a council member X that's elected in November of 2018, that council member would then, from that point forward, be able to serve three consecutive terms, and then if that council member wished to continue service, they would have to take a break of four years, and then could then rerun for office at that point. So what you have in the packet is a resolution that is intended to accomplish the stated goal, which would be to place this measure before the voters. It's sometimes called an ordinance or a measure, but it's synonymous. The way that the item would read on the proposed ballot would be, shall an ordinance be adopted, amending Camrio Municipal Code, section 2.08, to limit members of the city council to serving no more than three consecutive terms. The resolution does attach, as an exhibit, the entire ordinance, and this was a red folder item, because there was a very slight change to the one that was in the original packet. Added to, the original ordinance said, the city council of the city of Camrio ordains, and the Elections Code and its provisions under enactment clauses would require that language to read, that the people of the city of Camrio ordain, so that is a red line, and it's in your red folder.
And that should have no S at the end of ordained, right? I mean, it didn't come through in the red line, but.
It should have.
People are a collective noun, so the people ordain.
It is stricken in the red line. It's hard to see it, but.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that through the S, but.
I think the problem is that it's horizontal, and it goes right through the middle of the S.
Okay.
It's like when you strike out a four, it's hard to tell. So that's the report, I'm prepared to answer questions. I could, if the council would indulge me. Councilmember Kildy did ask at the last council meeting for information regarding what the council may or may not do with regards to proposed measures, so I could spend just a few minutes on that. And the answer is that, under the law, it's found in the Elections Code, the city council may submit ballot arguments for or against a measure. That is typically done, well, not typically, legally done, either by the legislative body as a whole, or by individual member or members that are authorized to do that by the body. In addition to ballot arguments, the case law, the courts have supported, are found to be legal, the action by the council to adopt a resolution to endorse a position with respect to the measure, either in favor or against the measure, so that's something else that can be done. In terms of comments that are made during council meetings with respect to a proposed measure, as you know, under the Brown Act, if there's going to be any discussion with respect to an item, it needs to be on the agenda, so it wouldn't have to be an agendized item, and at that point, the council could have a discussion about it, you could express your views, pro or con, and the reasons why. When you're out in the public, you are also, you know, you have free speech rights under the First Amendment, you can express your opinions with respect to the measure, as to whether you think it's a good idea, or a bad idea, or why. Now, having said that, I do have one caution. There is another measure that is out there that we're aware of, there's a petition that was submitted to the city, a notice of intention to circulate a petition with another term limit measure. That one is different than the one I described in my earlier comments, in that it provides for a two-term limit rather than three-term, and it also is a lifetime limit. So if you've served two terms, you can never again serve on the city council, so maximum number of years, any one person could serve on the council under that, two-term limit would be eight years. Now, I'll call that the two-term limit ordinance. That ordinance may or may not come to the council for action at a later date this year. It will if the petition is signed by the required number of voters, which is at least 10% of the registered voters in Camrio. If they get their 10%, then that, and assuming that it's reviewed by the county and that they're appropriate signatures, they do a signature verification, it comes to the council. The council would then have a choice, they could either adopt the measure as it's presented to them, you recall, we went through this recently with the curb ordinance, or you could take action to have the matter put on the ballot for the November election. Now, some people will ask, so I'll answer now, what would happen if, first of all, if neither measure gets 50% or more, then both measures fail and neither ordinance is adopted. If one measure gets 50% or more and the other one doesn't, then the one that got 50% or more would be the law in Camrio. If both measures get 50% or more, the measure getting the most affirmative votes is the one that would control. The reason for that is that these proposed ordinances inherently conflict with each other. When you have inconsistent ordinances, and obviously this is an example of one, where one's a three-term limit, one's a two-term limit, I mean, there's other differences, but that's one of the basics, you couldn't have both as your law, and the one that has the most affirmative votes would be the one that prevailed. Now, since the two-term limit ordinance may come to you later this year, even though I have indicated that you may be making comments with respect to your views on the merits or lack of merit of a term limit ordinance, I would caution that you do not indicate in those comments a prejudgment of that two-term ordinance, because it will come to you for action. I don't know what month it might be, June or July, I'm thinking, I think they have, would have until May, I don't know the specific dates, but that's kind of the timeline. It'll be a few months before it comes back to you. They've got, I think it's 180 days to collect signatures, and then we've got the county's calendar, and so there's various dates out there, but it'll be coming back to you in a few months. So, so the main objective and impartial, it would not be advisable for you to be critical or supportive of that two-term ordinance in advance of it coming to you for a decision. The reason for that is, there's case law out there that prohibits a council member from participating in a decision in which they've already made up their mind, and they've prejudged it. So if you were to express yourself and say, this isn't, you know, this two-term ordinance is one that I just can't support, won't support under any conditions, then that would be problematic in terms of your ability to vote on it when it comes to you for action as to whether to adopt it or send it on to the ballot. So, let's see, what else? Oh, you cannot use public funds in support of or opposition to a measure, so you wouldn't use city stationary, or, you know, city photocopy machines, any, any in-kind or cash of the city that might be available cannot be used, no city funds or in-kind equipment and things of that nature. Can be used with respect to a campaign, either for or against a measure. And I believe I've covered all the salient points there.
Mr. Attorney, I had, somehow I had thought that, let's suppose they, they gather their, whatever number of signatures, and that they're approved by the county, and then it's brought to us. I had thought that it still had to be voted on the, by the people, that we could not just adopt the ordinance.
You know, you're right, and I misspoke.
I thought I read that in one of your memos.
Yeah, you did, you did read that in one of my memos, and I, I apologize, I was confusing that with the fact that when we did the curb ordinance, that was one of our choices. So, thank you for asking that question, you're absolutely right, it would need to go to the voters, it is not an option for you to adopt that ordinance when it comes to you.
Thank you. Mr. Tremblay?
Thanks for answering that question, asking the question, Madam Mayor. The other thing I wanted to ask, Mr. Perrick, and that is that if this measure were, any term limits measure would be prospective in application, only prospective in application because of state law, correct?
Yes.
It can't be other than prospective in application.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the attorney?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildy?
Mr. Perrick, the ordinance that is before us tonight, and if I hear you right, we can actually go out in the committee and talk about this, would we be talking about it as a private citizen or a representative of this council?
Well, you're, you could speak about it as a council member, but you're not speaking for the council. So as an individual council member, you certainly, I mean, I guess, I guess it depends on how you phrase it, but what you don't want to say is, I'm speaking on behalf of the council, and, and based on that role, I'm for or against this particular measure. You can say, yeah, I'm a councilman, my name's Councilmember Kevin Kildy, and, and I want to discuss with you this measure, and you can have a conversation with him about that.
Would you recommend that we make an explanation before we start talking about these in no way, shape, or form represent necessarily the city council, but these are my views?
Yes, that's a good point, I think that would make it clear to the person you're speaking with, that you're speaking as an individual council member, and that you're not speaking on behalf of the council, so that would be, that would be advisable to, to provide that explanation.
Okay, we have three cards from people who'd like to speak to us on this, I'll take them in the order that I received them.
Let me give you our rules. We have a policy that each person gets three minutes to speak. You can see a clock, and I see the same clock in front of you, and it counts down. When it gets to one, it will turn, it will start out as green, even though now it's red, it will turn to red, or turn to yellow, and a light or orange, and a light buzzer will sound. You then have one minute left, it's just kind of a warning. And so then, as I tell people, when it turns red and the final buzzer goes off, a little door opens, and you just fall down, and we get the next speaker.
Fall off to the bottom?
Yeah. Okay, but at the beginning, please state your name for the record.
My name is Dana Schuster.
Can you just pull the mic over and talk right into it?
Like that?
Yeah.
Okay, hi, my name is Dana Schuster. I am one of the signers of the Camrio Citizens Term Limits Initiative. I would like to comment in regards to the February 14 council meeting, when Mrs. McDonald referred to our term limits initiative as a way of, quote, blackmailing Mr. Morgan to the council's own version of term limits on the ballot. Her exact words are, "Don't allow them to blackmail you into putting something on the ballot that you didn't, didn't support." I find the comment rather sad and incredibly insulting to have our own elected officials call what we, or any other citizen practicing our civil right and duty, a criminal act. I do not understand the anger and hostility towards the Camrio Citizens Term Limits Initiative. Camrio is its citizens, and everyone deserves the opportunity to serve their city and community. We citizens of Camrio should never have to fear retribution or backlash for taking part in our own city governance. This behavior is absolutely unacceptable. It goes against our city motto of, "The people are the city." Thank you.
Okay, and we didn't even have to get the doors to open up.
Next time.
Matthew Lorimer. Mr. Lorimer, this is the second night in a row you've had, what happened to changing your name around?
I'm still in the witness protection program. I can't talk about it.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
Matthew Wayne Lorimer. As a person who ran for city council several times, I can't support Mr. Tremblay's bill. You know, the worst thing you can do, if you're at home, if you're in the audience, is allow, basically somebody on a city council to write a term initiative. What's wrong about it is, is the perspective from the people who've lived in this community. The city council went on to say, things are just great, trust us, because long-term brings us prosperity. Really? The firehouse empty 20 years? That's not prosperity. The desalination plant, 15 years? The Fiesta scandal with no regulations? The Habitat for Humanity scandal? We can go on and on, there's a lot of bad things. I cannot support Mr. Tremblay's thing. You know something? Don't you be fooled at home. Politicians, they're trying to make the best thing. Politicians, they're trying to make the best thing they can for themselves by this bill. This bill is a joke. You need to vote. Two terms is plenty. You know something? I had a meeting with somebody at the Nixon Library. Somebody's following this very carefully in other parts of California, and they said, you know something, eight years is plenty. The President of the United States, nobody wants their president, whether you're Democrat or Republican, more than eight years. You know why? Because things go away. And the idea, you know, I ran for city council. There seemed to be some comments made that people who run for city council have no new ideas. Really? 32% crime increase over two years? I recommended a bicycle patrol several times to city council. You ignored me. If you go along this community, people tell you about how they're being broken in. This city council's done nothing. That was a great idea. The senior center, disgusting. Over 50 years not supporting a senior center. That's the city council's record. Also, the firehouse. On and on, we can talk about it. But you know something? The most important thing is you, the citizens at home, can't be fooled by politicians writing their own bills and trying to stay in office for a long time. You're smarter than that. You can read and write. You went to school in America. You have common sense. When people write bills and want to stick in office longer than they should, and they not successful, this city has some good things, but there's some bad things, and they don't talk about it. You know something? And how about campaign finance reform? Mr. Tremblay, you spent $55,000 running for the next election. Kevin, $17,000. That's a lot of money. Campaign finance report should be part of that, too. You know something, the election, average person, are they going to be able to run in the future? Are we going to get lawyers and doctors? And then we're going to have high rises in the city council, the city of Camerio. You need to think about the citizens at home. Think very carefully when you read the ballot initiative and why somebody would write it in favor of one way or another. Thank you very much.
Next card is from Patty Lerner.
My name is Patty Lerner. Once again, I would like to thank you for moving this resolution forward so quickly. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been reading comments made online by those supporting the two-year term limit, as well as reviewing comments made at the meeting the last, on the 14th. And I think we're all kind of getting ahead of ourselves relative to the resolution tonight. Because what's before you tonight is not saying, yes, vote for term limits, or no, don't vote for term limits. You're saying, let's give the community an opportunity to vote and make their voices heard. You can still, as an individual, be against term limits, but by a, and still vote for this to be put on the ballot. And by attempting to do this one, the three-year term limit, you are ensuring continuity. As you've heard, the two-term limit committee, they're already outgathering votes. They're already moving. And so there's great likelihood that it will be coming before you. This ensures giving the community another choice. And so tonight, really, the debate isn't, am I for, you know, is this for term limits or is it against? That debate comes later, once things are on the ballot. Tonight is, will you give the community a balanced resolution to vote on for term limits? If the community doesn't want any term limits, whatever's on the ballot will fail. But this is obviously something that is being discussed in the community. And so, you know, one way or another, there's, something's going to end up being on the ballot. So do you want to give this community and ensure this community has a balanced measure to vote on? Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak to us on term limits? Seeing no one come forward, I will just ask the council for comments and recommendations. Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a lengthy discussion on this item at the last meeting, so I really don't want to rehash that. I will say, in response to Mr. Lorimer's comments, respectfully, I'm a 34-year resident of the city of Camerio. I love the city. This measure I drafted because it's a follow-up to a campaign commitment that I made, and it matches, in terms of its provisions, what's already in place for the cities of Ventura and Thousand Oaks and for the county of Ventura. I think it's appropriate that the voters decide this issue. And I'm, I would be, at Madam Mayor's, I would be happy to make a motion at the appropriate time. I make it right now, but I think other council members may want to speak.
Well, we can always speak after a motion is made.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution.
Don't we get some comments first?
Either way.
We can do it either way.
However you want to do it.
I have some comments.
Even after they make the motion, we still have comments. What would you like me to do procedurally, Madam Mayor?
Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor, and then we'll ask council members to speak to it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution placing a proposed term limit measure on the November 6, 2018 ballot, as specified in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second for conversation.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, so Mrs. McDonald, would you like to speak?
You want me to go first?
You want to go first?
Mr. Kildy, would you go first?
He wants to go first.
Okay.
My comments are nothing personal. I have a philosophical feeling about term limits, and I think, I don't want to go on very long, but I think this is our only opportunity to make some comments on this, and I appreciate everybody here and I appreciate everybody's opinions and thoughts on this. It's always been my opinion that we do have term limits. We have elections in this city every four years. You have a four-year term. We have elections every two years, and I'm all for inclusion. I think everybody, including incumbents, ought to have a right to decide whether or not they want to run for public office in our city here. If term limits were such a great idea, why didn't the founding fathers, they had opportunities to implement them, and they didn't here? You know, we're all about inclusion here. I've had several elections here. I don't have to get into the challenges of the elections. I've been challenged by some very extremely talented individuals, and I've been very fortunate that I've been able to win when I've ran. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. Whatever happens with this, I'm not going to be here for 12 years. This isn't about me. This is about the future here. I just want to remind everybody, these are part-time, local positions here. We are not Thousand Oaks. We're not Ventura. They're both over 100,000 residents, and the county, I think, is somewhere in the 750,000 to 800,000 residents. Camerio is somewhere in the vicinity of 65,000 to 70,000 residents. We're citizen-elected officials here. I've kept a log of all my calls, all the people that have talked to me over the years here, and I can only speak for myself. I've tried to be as responsive as I could about this. I want to read that we are in the process of going out for recruitment for an assistant city manager. I just want to read just a little section of this, if I may. "The majority of the city's five council members have several years of experience on the city council, which contributes to the political stability of this organization. The city council, city manager, and department staffs have an excellent working relationship with each group respecting and honoring the other's roles and responsibilities. Employee turnover is extremely low, and most employees, including some department heads, have worked for this organization for many years. I seem to think, I like to think that most of our employees are satisfied with their employment here. They're very good. I'm very proud of all of our employees here. They've made me look good on several occasions when I was probably undesirable to be." Let me just say here that I think this is very, very simple, and I'm going to try to simplify this as much as I can. If you think this is good public policy, then vote for it. However, if you don't think it's good public policy, and if you think we've already got safeguards in effect now with our four-year terms, and if anybody can bring anybody any message to me that somebody that wanted to run didn't, I'd like to hear that, too. I think I've talked to several people that have wanted to run for city council, and most of them have decided to run. It's their own decision, and that's what I'm about. I think it should be your own personal decision, along with your family and other factors as to whether or not that you want to take on this monumental challenge here. I was fortunate. I got elected at 39. There's other council members, past and present, that got elected in their early 40s. We may never see that again. So this situation that we've had, there's a good possibility that'll take care of itself in the future. So those are my, my comments on this. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here. I respect your opinions. Those are my opinions, and hopefully people can understand where I feel about this issue.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Well, first, I do want to apologize if my comment was taken in a wrong way, and I probably used very much probably the wrong choice of words, as the earlier speaker said. I believe that the people have the right. There's a mechanism in place. If someone wants to put this on the ballot, they have every single right to do that. I myself have been in times where I've petitioned, and I've gone out and collected signatures, and I've done it myself. So I absolutely believe that's the right thing to do, and you absolutely have the right. My comment was made in the context that I heard two city, other council members say they didn't like the current one in front of them, but they liked that one less, and so they were going to approve something they didn't really like. And that's why I made my comment. Was it proper, probably not the best choice of words. So I do apologize if you took that wrong. I absolutely support the fact that you have the right to go out and work to have something put on the ballot. So please accept my apologies if that was taken to be less than appropriate. Having said that, I do have some comments I want to make, and I, like Mr. Kildy, feel this is indeed our opportunity to make our reasons known for how, why we take a position, and so I'm going to take that opportunity. But before I begin, I want to make it absolutely perfectly clear, this has nothing to do with me personally. I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I can't imagine myself sitting here 12 years from now wanting to run for office again. So whether term limits pass or doesn't pass, it won't have an effect on my running for city council. It is, it's quite an anomaly that this Camerio has such a veteran council, and this probably will not happen again with or without term limits. Camerio has the reputation of being a well-run city and desirable city in which to live and work. This veteran, stable city council has a lot to do with that. My thoughts on the subject of term limits come from many years of public service and from working with and observing the many other cities within California, as well as other jurisdictions and agencies within the state. But most importantly, my opposition to Mr. Tremblay's proposal comes from my most basic philosophical ideal, from the most basic philosophical ideal, that voters have the right to choose who they wish to vote for. Every registered voter gets one vote, and everyone who is 18 years of age or older and lives within the jurisdiction has the right to run for city council. I do not believe that Mr. Tremblay or the voters of today should place a restriction on the voters of tomorrow and tell those voters of the future who they can't vote for. If the voters of tomorrow want to vote for an incumbent, that should be their right, their choice, not Mr. Tremblay's, not Mr. Tremblay's proposal. I believe it does punish incumbents, but most of, who do a good job, but most of all, it restricts the rights of voters in the future. Being an incumbent can be a good thing, and being an incumbent can be a bad thing. If everything is going well, it's a good thing, and there's a probability and a good chance you'll be reelected, not because you're an incumbent, but because the voters are happy with the way things are going. But if things aren't going well, if people are not happy with the state of the city or the job a council member is doing, then being an incumbent is not a good thing. Being incumbent, excuse me, being an incumbent under those conditions will probably get you fired by the voters, if of course there is a better candidate to choose from. Since our last meeting, I have done some research on term limits, and while everyone can twist a subject to suit their purpose, there does not seem to be any indication that term limits imposed at the state legislature level on down has had a positive impact. Rather, there seems to be more negatives than positives. Regarding term limits at the California State Legislature level, first, a correction. Proposition 140 establishing term limits for California State Legislature was passed in 1990, not 1978, as Mr. Tremblay stated at the last meeting. Then Proposition 28 in 2012 made some changes to the provision for term limits, correcting, trying to correct problems with Proposition 140. One interesting study I read was the public, was from the Public Policy Institute of California. That study made some interesting points. The study found, and I quote, "The authors find that term limits altered, but not revolutionized the type of legislator who comes to Sacramento. Rather than representing a new breed of citizen legislator, new members after term limits behave a great deal like their predecessors. Many have local government experience and run for another office, for Assembly or for state senate. When their terms expire, careerism remains a constant in California politics." They also noted that legislative oversight of the executive branch has declined significantly. Frequent changes to the membership and leadership of legislative committees diminish their expertise in many important policy areas. Many committees lack the experience to weed out bad bills and to ensure that agencies are acting efficiently and in accordance with legislative intent. Nothing in my research led me to change my mind that overall term limits have not had a positive effect on our state government. Having witnessed our state legislature before and after term limits, I believe it is one of the worst things that has happened to our state government. Sacramento is run by lobbyists and staff members, with many elected representatives moving from one office to another. Many knowing they don't have long in office push through some of their pet projects and some of the worst ideas for the state, and then agree to other members' pet projects just to get their own through. This is particularly problematic as they often are long gone before they would have to deal with the results of those decisions, and more often than not, the unintentional consequences of the new laws. Mr. Tremblay continues to point to Ventura, Thousand Oaks, and the Board of Supervisors as local governmental agencies with term limits that have been successful. I believe that statement is misleading to the public. While term limits have been passed in those jurisdictions, I do not know how you can come to that conclusion about term limits and the fact that they've been successful, since there has not been an election when an incumbent has been termed out and not eligible to run again. Thousand Oaks and Ventura and the Board of Supervisors have indeed instituted term limits, three, four-year terms. Interestingly, put on the ballot by already long-term members of those jurisdictions, and none of them have termed out yet. The Board of Supervisors first imposed term limits in 2007, and I believe Steve Bennett last year was elected to his final term. Mrs. Long elected to retire before running for her final eligible term. So it is yet to be determined how successful the concept has been in Ventura, Thousand Oaks, and the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. Another important note is, Camerio is not Ventura or Thousand Oaks, and certainly not the County Ventura Board of Supervisors. Camerio is a much smaller city with our own culture and political history. I hope Camerio never reaches the $100,000, $100,000 mark, or adopts the big-city type of politics or the influence of big money. Since our last meeting, a resident brought some information to my attention regarding the city council election in 2016. Something that has occurred in Ventura and Thousand Oaks often has not, but has never happened in Camerio before, and something I hoped would never happen, but it occurred. In Camerio's 52-year In Camarillo's 52-year history, prior to 2016, no one has ever spent over $55,000 on a city council election. In our city's history, our local government's elected officials were elected because of their hard work and proven record or getting out and working for name recognition, not because they bought that name recognition. Mr. Tremblay spent over $55,000 on his campaign for city council in 2016. Almost $20,000 came from Mr. Tremblay personally, and $9,000 from a family member, and this is, of course, all public record. The balance was from donations, many attorneys, and a number of donations from outside of Camarillo. And interestingly, of the over $55,000, only 839 was from donations under $100. And for the first time in Camarillo's history, a council member spent over $35,000 on a political consulting firm to run his campaign, and $2,000 on a treasurer. How many people can afford to do that? Once one candidate is willing and able to spend that much money, the money competition begins, but only for those who can afford it. The rest are left out. Mr. Tremblay states, "Good candidates don't come forward because they lack name recognition to be elected when running against incumbents." Mr. Tremblay is pushing term limits to create open seats and give more people the opportunity to run and win. I have to ask, how many people can afford to spend over $30,000 of your own money and spend $55,000 to win a seat on our local city council? In Mr. Tremblay's world, election world, you'd have to be rich. Up until the last election, the most spent on a city council election was $21,000. It was an oddity and the most ever spent. In our history, there were a few who spent no money, but the average ranged from $2,800 to $9,000. One might say, "Well, he had to do it to have that name recognition, to beat an incumbent," to which I would say, "I would rather have an incumbent who has earned that name recognition than someone who can afford to buy it." And once that money game begins, it won't matter if incumbents are there to be voted for. The one with the most money wins. And then the question, when you raise that much money, who do you owe what? Turning Camarillo politics into a model after the larger cities of Ventura and Thousand Oaks is not in keeping with our city, our size, that hometown feel and culture we cherish. To make Camarillo into Ventura and Thousand Oaks does not sound like a good idea to me. Another question that was raised, excuse me, regarding the money spent by Mr. Tremblay in the last election is the hiring of his campaign consultant, Ren Con. Interestingly, when you visit their homepage, under "Winning for Our Client," they list Shea Homes and Oakmont Senior Living. Describing Oakmont Senior Living Development on their homepage, they say, "They developed and executed a community relations strategy to grow support for the proposed Oakmont Existed Living Facility in Camarillo, California, in order to counter and correct misinformation brought forth through local neighborhood opponents." Since Ren Con had helped get him elected a few months earlier, one might think he would at least mention that relationship before voting against the residents, those neighborhood opponents. Another interesting question that was raised by this resident regarding Mr. Tremblay's campaign fundraising, "Does it seem quite right that an attorney with the city attorney's firm, Brook Williams, donated $200 to Mr. Tremblay's campaign?" Why mention these items that were brought to my attention? While technically not illegal, it shows big-city problems being brought into Camarillo city government, and term limits such as Ventura and Thousand Oaks is a big-city issue. An elected official is elected by the voters for a specific term. With the city council, it is for four years. If the elected official wishes to seek reelection and the voters make that decision to reelect that individual, he or she will serve for another four years. Every four years, voters get to decide who they want to represent them on the city council. It isn't a social club where everybody gets a chance. The voters make this decision, who they want to elect. To set an arbitrary time limit on the voter's choice is unfair to the voters. Mr. Tremblay today should not be telling the voters of tomorrow who they cannot vote for. If the majority of the voters like what is going on in their city and wish to reelect someone that they think is doing a good job, then that's their choice, not yours. If the voters choose the known over the unknown, then it's their choice to make, not yours. Mr. Tremblay states, "Term limits enhance citizen governments so that new council members can bring fresh ideas and perspectives to the council." New ideas for the sake of new ideas is not necessarily a good thing, particularly when brought forth without an understanding of the city or the governmental process under which the state and local governments must operate. I have watched cities throughout California bounce back and forth as a council member frequently changed positions. What sounds like a good idea may turn out to be a disaster, when they swing one way and then they swing back the other way, and they never seem to find stability. And there usually is also a constant change in city staff that follows, which also adds to that instability. One does not have to be on the city council to get involved or offer new ideas. There are many, many organizations within our community where an individual can get involved and better our community. The city has committees in which they can serve. Any member of the public can bring forth their ideas and comments, both positive and negative. We can list many programs and changes that have occurred because members of the public have brought it forward. Probably the most recent is the Clean Power of Southern California Joint Powers Authority that the city just brought. That was brought forward by members of the community. The five members of our city council are elected to represent the public, and every member of the public has the opportunity to have their voice heard. They call, they write, they can attend city council meetings, and they can attend city events. Local government is the government closest to the people and held more accountable by the people. We live and work in the community, and don't head off to Sacramento or Washington, D.C. No matter where we go, we interact with our citizens of our community. Mr. Tremblay states, "Good candidates don't come forward because they lack name recognition to be elected when running against an incumbent." There are indeed many people in our community who would probably make very good council members. However, many of these people have no desire to serve in that capacity and would rather serve in other ways. Many are too busy with their own families and work. And many, when they realize the time involved, the responsibility you assume, and the criticism you must endure, they decide not to put themselves in that position. There have been some who have run for city council with no idea what the job entails and have been glad in the end they were not elected. And there have been some that have run for the office that the voters have recognized would probably not be successful or represent them well. Just because someone wants to be a city council member does not mean they should be elected to give them their chance. The voters get to decide who they want to elect to represent them, and they should not be limited in that choice. Mr. Tremblay implies being an incumbent and having name recognition is a bad thing and keeps good people from running for office. Being an incumbent can be a good thing, and it can be a bad thing. If things are going well, it is a good thing. If things are not going well, it's a bad thing. Because the city of Camarillo is good, and it's a well-run city, Mr. Tremblay wants to restrict incumbents instead of thanking them and let the voters decide if they want the incumbent to continue working for them. In most cases, particularly in a town our size, the voters want to elect someone they know or have heard about. That is, if things are going well. In a community our size, it does not and should not take a lot of money to fund a campaign, unlike larger cities or higher office. Someone can be elected if they're willing to work hard for the job and gain that name recognition. One should not expect serving on the city council to be their first step in gaining name recognition. Hopefully, a candidate runs to serve their community and not as simply a stepping stone to a higher office. If you want to gain name recognition and get elected, get involved. Work for your community and prove yourself. As I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of ways to get involved in our community. We need good people to get out and work for our community. Our city motto is, indeed, "The city is the people." It doesn't say the city is the city council. It really is easy to complain about what is happening and a lot harder to get out and work to make it better. There are many benefits for having long-term seasoned council members able to deal with a huge variety of issues. There is a benefit to having council members with experience, giving them the ability to represent the city on regional and state boards and committees. To have a constant turnover in council members will diminish the city of Camarillo's influence in regional and state issues. Being a city council member is not just about getting elected to fulfill a certain goal. Rather, it's about serving your community. A one-issue candidate, unless they can quickly change and adapt, does not make a very good council member. The time commitment is huge, and the responsibility even greater. A good council member needs to listen, learn, analyze, and weigh the pros and cons on a large array of issues and topics, and always remember they were elected to represent the people, not themselves. Ultimately, every four years, it is up to the voters to decide, do they like the way things are going, or do they want to change? I do not support the city council placing the measure on the ballot, although I certainly -- everyone has the right to go out and to collect signatures and get a measure on the ballot. But to have the city council place that question on the ballot implies the city council's support. If they don't want it, some would say, "Well, why in the world did they put it on the ballot?" As the resolution before you tonight says, "The analysis shall include a statement indicating the measure was placed on the ballot by the Camarillo City Council." If you vote to place this on the ballot, you will own it. You don't get to add a footnote that says, "We don't really support this. Just didn't want something else." If you support the idea of term limits, then vote to put it on the ballot. If you don't support the idea of term limits, then don't vote to put it on the ballot. And if Mr. Tremblay wants to see term limits on the ballot, then let him go out, just like this other group, and work for it. If he can collect 4,000 signatures to place the issue on the ballot, then that shows there is some support for the issue, and it should go to the voters. It is interesting, since Mr. Tremblay sent his letter to the editor of both newspapers, stating his position on term limits, and that he was going to take it to the city council, obviously wanting to drum up support. We only heard from two of his supporters at the last meeting and received a few letters from his campaign supporters. There have been two letters to the editor since our last meeting in response to the issue, one for and one against. The Acorn Newspaper, while endorsing the idea in the end, gave many pros and many cons to the proposition. And there has been discussions, as I said earlier, online, some for, some against. All depends on what website you go to. But there has not been a huge groundswell pushing the city council to place the issue on the ballot. Will many people vote for it? Probably. Do most people really care? Probably not. Is it in the best interest in Camarillo's future? I don't think so. Let the future generations decide who they want to vote for. Don't let Mr. Tremblay, in this case, tell them they can't vote for it. If Mr. Tremblay wants it so badly, let him go out and work for it and collect the signatures. If the city council places it on the ballot, then we own it, each and every one of us. There will not be a footnote that says, "Four of us really don't support this." If the issue is placed before the voters, I do hope the voters will think about the issue on the local level, think about our city, think about future generations of voters, and not let the dysfunction that occurs at the state and federal level guide their vote. And if you are inclined to vote yes, because you think the current council members have served too long, please remember, this doesn't have any effect on the current city council. It's about future generations. Let them decide for themselves who they want to vote for. So you obviously can tell I don't support the city council placing the measure on the ballot. I support anyone who wants to go through the effort to have a measure put on the ballot. That is certainly their right, and if they have supporters and want to do that, it is something that the voters can then decide on.
Mr. Morgan.
There's so much to respond to. That was the longest speech I've seen anybody in this council ever make.
It wasn't Nancy Pelosi.
And it was the longest speech I've ever seen anyone make.
Well, there was one council member who made longer ones.
And, pardon me?
Mr. Goff. Yeah, that was my opportunity.
Well, this one is about an issue. I agree with Mr. Kilde in a lot of ways, because I think that we, as a council, and I kind of look at a gentleman out there that lives in Texas coming here telling us how to run our city. I'm sorry. But we were voted in 2016 as one of the best places to live in the United States, 23rd best place to live of cities under 300,000 in the whole United States. So we're doing something right. And we talk about our police. Our police, we still have one of the best crime rates in Ventura County, not just in Ventura County, but the whole state of California. What you're not looking at is all the new laws passed by the state of California, which allows people to get out early, which allows people to take felonies up to $900 and something dollars instead of $500 and something. Many things they've done that has increased the crime in every city in California. So I'd say we're still in great shape, and our serious crimes are very low compared to others. When I first came to become a city councilman, there were issues. We were growing at 3,100 new houses a year. Think about that. 3,100. In 10 years, we'd have been 31,000 new homes. But it's not what you think, it's what the people of Camarillo think. We have to represent the people of Camarillo, not ourselves. That's what we're here for, to see what's best for Camarillo and represent the best we can, our population. Well, had to take it to the people, and the people voted on 72%. Said, "Yes, let's have growth control." So our growth control took us down to 400 or less units a year. That's what we've been living with since 1983. Thousand Oaks did the same thing, but they had loopholes. They're 130, 140,000. We're 70. So it shows we upheld our growth control all through these years. So someone says, "We're growing like a weed." Well, it's almost finished. The city's almost done. There's one gentleman, we talked about those coming back. There's only one gentleman I know of in our history and elsewhere in this county that came back a second term that was Stan Daley. Stan did come back, and he did a good job. So it can happen, but it doesn't happen very often, not ever, because once you leave this, you have other things that you want to do in your life. The term limits, we look at state legislature, and I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. McDonald. I've been to state legislature for conferences, like a month and a half ago, I went for the Contract Cities meeting. Of those legislators that addressed us, three of them have already resigned because they got caught doing some things, and another one is now in hold, and she probably will be leaving also. There's a lot of things going on up there. Of all legislators I've been with in all these years I've been on this council, this is the worst one. Those that had longer terms, that were farmers, a lot of good guys, that were fantastic legislators, and we did some great things in this state. But now, look what's happening. You go gas tax 12% more, registration fees higher. Want me to keep going? That's exactly what's happening there now. And people have to now go back and try to get it on the ballot so we can vote against some of that stuff that they did to us. And the cities are suffering, too. We have to -- one gentleman, well, I was there, he had apologized, because he was talking to the Contract Cities group. He had to apologize because he sponsored a bill that wanted all contracting to go away in cities. In other words, making like the big cities unionized, well, that makes the cost go up. And while this, since 1990, look at our retirement system. I think it was Mr. Brown set aside $15 billion to make up for the potential problem we're going to have real soon in our retirement system for the state of California. But that's because of all the decisions that were made through these years. The city of Camarillo, we've been very lucky, because we've had some educated people that were elected to this body, and I think we've done a good job. One of the main things we've done that's a good job is we've hired staff that we've seen that can be proud of, and they're educated, and also see what the council wants and push in that direction. If you have a council that's here for two terms, it'll be our staff running it, because they'll know what's happening. And sometimes, that's not necessarily good for the cities. And sometimes that's not necessarily good for the citizens of our city. Anyway, I'm not going to go a whole lot further. I just want to let you know that the reason I would support this is not because I like it, because I'm not going to vote for it, honestly. Because we've had some good people, and we'll probably have good people in the future in this city. But I think the people need to have a chance to vote on something that is out there. I have heard so many things, and I go to a lot of stuff, in like church goings and so on and other things, of people saying, "Why are we doing this? Why are we vote, I mean, why is that going to be on the ballot? I don't, you think, you believe in that?" I said, "No, because we've had good people. If we haven't, they're gone." And those groups I first was with, gone, they're gone. They sought handwriting on a wall and didn't run, or they lost. Now, the ones that are after us are the ones who have lost two or three times to us in elections. And this board right here has never spent more than, except one, has never spent more, and I don't want to criticize you for that, Tony, I don't want to criticize you for that, but has never spent more than 10, 12 at the most, $1,000, and a lot of it's our own money. So we have not, none of us owe any special interest group, because we didn't take any. I don't know of any of you guys. None of us have taken money from a special interest group. This way, we have no conflicts. We can vote on things honestly and represent our people honestly. And so tonight, I may vote for this, but I'm not, I mean, I may, you know, put this on the ballot, but it doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it. And Mr., one more question. I got a gentleman here from Texas. Do you live in Texas or you live here?
Um, I'm sorry.
I know, I know. I'm sorry, I'm done, I'm done. I'm done, you say your thing.
Okay. I just want to make one thing clear. Under Exhibit A, it does say the people of the city of Camarillo are the name, it doesn't say the city council. So that's my only comment on everything that's been said. At the last meeting, I gave a long list of the reasons why I personally don't support term limits, but I believe that I'm going to be one vote out of all of the residents of Camarillo who vote on this issue. And so I do support putting it on the ballot to ask the people how they feel about it. So that being said, everybody having had a time to talk, I would like to, oh.
Well, I. Madam Mayor, with respect, my name has been mentioned so much by another council member that I feel somewhat like Darth Vader, and so I would like a chance to respond to some of the arguments that have been made. And I think that is certainly appropriate, and I'll try not to go too long, but I do have a rebuttal to it. And first of all, Ms. McDonald, you're absolutely correct. Prop 40 was done in 1990, because I went home and looked, and I was mistaken that night, between 1978 versus 1990. Look, I have proceeded on this in a respectful way. This is not intended as a referendum on the current council. It's my idea of what is good government, my personal idea, to invigorate citizen government. I don't buy the analogy with the state legislature. I think it's distinguishable, those are partisan offices, local government is very different, and I don't think you can equate the Camarillo City Council with the state legislature, nor would I ever want to go there. The fact that you argue, Ms. McDonald, that term limits have been put on the ballot by long-term members of jurisdictions speaks for itself. Fundamentally, I believe in putting this in the hands of the voters. I know darn well that I have members, there are four of my colleagues sitting up here who don't agree with term limits conceptually. But there's a distinction between that and letting the voters decide it, and I trust the voters with that. You know, in terms of defeating an incumbent, here's a one-sentence excerpt from one of the letters that we received from a constituent. However, incumbents have enormous advantages in public awareness, fundraising, and their ability to use their offices to win reelection. And I think that's absolutely true. The money that I spent on my election, it was my choice to spend my funds, I was fortunate to be able to do so, and that's my choice. And I think, Ms. McDonald, you're conflating the issue of campaign finance versus term limits. And with respect to Oakmont and the Shea Projects, I reject that wholeheartedly. I did not have any contact with those developers. I have maintained a complete distance, and to infer otherwise, I think, is just absolutely wrong. With respect to a contribution that I got, it was from a long-term colleague of mine at my former law firm, who I worked with for many, many years. I support the right of the voters to decide, and I think we just have a fundamental disagreement in perspective. And with that, I appreciate your time, and I'm ready to go. Vote.
Please vote.
Oh, man, I need to say one thing here.
Was there a second? That's been a while.
Yes, there was. Mr. Morgan seconded it.
I have to make it perfectly clear.
Okay, but I'm asking to you to please vote.
Oh, I did. Oh, I voted the wrong way, sorry. Can you clear that, please?
Okay, please vote. I think everybody understands what the motion is.
I know, really.
Okay, motion carries 3-2 with Mr. Kildee and Mrs. McDonald voting against the motion. Okay, did you have a comment, Mrs. McDonald?
No, I just want to make it perfectly clear, and I know I went on and on and on, it was my one chance to say something, but throughout my whole, I don't know how long that took, it always was about letting the voters decide. What bothers me about this is, is it's the city council putting it on the ballot. If the voters want it on the ballot, that is certainly their choice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are going to recess to a study session, which is two items, and I doubt that we will get to have time for a closed session. But just in case, I'd like to ask the city attorney to tell us the conditions under which we would recess to a closed session if we have time.
Yes, there are all real property negotiations authorized by Government Code Section 54956.8. The details regarding each of them is in the agenda. The properties are the Hotel Conference Center, the former library building, the former fire station, and a proposed desalter parcel.
Okay, and with that, we will be in recess, and we'll be back for regular business at
Place your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have a presentation on 2-1-1 Annual Update. Who is going to make this? Okay. I didn't see you there for all the people, thank you.
I'm Kelly Brown, the 2-1-1 Director for Ventura County, and I think you-
Can you speak right into that mic so all our people out in television land can hear you?
Sure, absolutely. So thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm Kelly Brown, the 2-1-1 Ventura County Director, and I wanted to talk to you tonight a little bit about our work overall in the county, but mostly focusing on our work in Camarillo, since that's probably what you're most interested in. But last year, we did talk to and help 42,000 community members in the county, which is a big jump from last year, or the year before, mostly due to the Thomas Fire activity. 23,000 of those, almost 24,000, were visitors to our website. 18,000 of those were callers, and about 1,600 of those talked to us via two-way text, which we started last year. During the Thomas Fire, we talked to almost 7,000 callers and 10,000 texters between Ventura and Santa Barbara County. So we did help Santa Barbara County, since we take those calls as well for that county. And during the mudslide, we had a lot of activity there. What I wanted to mostly talk to you about tonight was our activity in the city of Camarillo. And this is the stats about the callers and texters that we're interacting with from your city. But the information I think that you're probably most interested in is what are they calling us and texting us for? As usual, the most important and most needed issue that we have in 2-1-1 for Camarillo City is housing. And next would be mental health and addiction support, and then income support and assistance. As far as unmet needs, our top unmet needs for the city of Camarillo have been housing, personal goods and services, and that would probably be mostly for people looking for diapers and clothing. Meals, and when I say meals, I'm taking out food pantries here, I'm talking about people looking for a place for a hot meal, so somewhere that they're going to sit down and have breakfast, lunch, or dinner. And then transportation expense assistance. Every year, our needs have been pretty much the same as long as I've been here with 2-1-1. So I started out as a manager, it's been about nine years now. So now that I'm the director, I started looking at what are the trends? And every year, housing is the number one need, right? And I don't think that we're going to be able to solve that here tonight, but what I want you to know is what we've done at 2-1-1 in the last 12 months to do what we can. So we did partner with the County Continuum of Care, so that we can do HMIS entry for all of our callers that call in. So if somebody calls 2-1-1 today, they would hear a message that says, "Are you homeless or about to be homeless in the next 14 days?" If they are, then they would go to what we call a contact specialist. It's one of our call specialists that we've promoted to a higher position, and they would screen them for HMIS, which is Homeless Management Information System, which is the gateway into the services that the county provides for homeless individuals and also other providers that are also partners with the Continuum of Care. So we started doing that HMIS entry in August, and we've talked to about 800 callers that identified as homeless during that time. About 180 of those 800 callers qualified for HMIS entry. 14 of those were city of Camarillo residents. So of those 14, I wanted to let you know a little bit about a couple of them. And one of them was a single mother who was here from another state. She was living in her car with her child, and she called into us looking to see what services might be available for her. She had been living in her car for several weeks here in the city of Camarillo. And we were able to screen her and get her into HMIS and help her to get into a transitional living program with her child. Another was a family of five, mother and father with three children, who called us in distress while they were being actively evicted from their home. So it was a little late for us to help them with what we would call HPRP funding that would help them to not get evicted, since it was already happening. But what we were able to do was to help them get HPRP funding to get a deposit on a new home. And then the last person I wanted to talk to you about was a single mom who was also living in her car but had had an 11-year-old child that she sent to live in another city with family because she didn't want the child to sleep in the car with her. These are all three families that were living here in Camarillo. So I did have a presentation that John Franchi, I'm sure you all know him, he came out and talked to all of my call specialists, I really thank you for his time. And before we started the program, I wanted my call specialist to understand what is going on in the cities that we're helping. And he came out and talked to us for about two hours about the homeless population of Camarillo. And I live here in Camarillo, I have for a long time, I'm a homeowner, my family owns a business here, and I was stunned when he told me what the actual population of homeless was in Camarillo. He told me it was, I think, 80 individuals, and I had no idea, it was so high.
Fifty.
Fifty?
Fifty.
At the time, this is a year ago, I don't know, I think he said 80, but maybe-
We just got the report.
I was really surprised, you know, where are they at, you know? So to me, even though maybe we were only able to help 14, it does have some kind of an effect. So the funding that you provided us last year helped us to be able to be part of that program, to be able to fund promoting my staff to be HMIS entry specialists, and I really thank you for that. And I think that the difference that we're able to make, it has a lot to do with you. So thanks so much.
Thank you for all the work you do. We're always proud of the 2-1-1 program, because you guys started it. We were the first city to fund it, and for several years, we were the only city to fund it. And it has expanded to such a great geographic area now. But we're proud of having been part of your beginnings.
And 2-1-1 Ventura County, just so that you know, we did start as the first 2-1-1 in California, and we still continue to lead the nation in helping to bring 2-1-1s together. We are part of the effort to bring 2-1-1 to every county of California, and there are several up north that do not have 2-1-1, and we are always actively trying to help them to get it. And we're also part of a group that is helping to bring all the 2-1-1 data together across the whole nation into one place, so that when you search 2-1-1, regardless if you're helping a family member that lives in Alabama or yourself here, you'd be able to get the information all from one place. So while we always want to work here in the heart where we're from, in Ventura County, we also are trying to help out as we can across the state and the nation as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one question. You know about soup kitchens at St. Mary's and at Potrera and Presbyterian Church and so on, right?
Yes.
I didn't see many homeless the last time I went there to help serve.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why they wouldn't be frequenting the different programs that are available, but as far as hot meal programs, the only one that wants to list with 2-1-1 at this time is St. Mary Magdalene's Church.
Right.
So the other ones, I think, are over capacity, and they're not really wanting us to send additional people to them at this time, and we always honor that. We don't list anybody in our database that doesn't want us to. So if they ask to be removed, we would remove them. So at this time, for somebody who is not a senior, there is only one program that's at St. Mary's.
Yes, I was there.
And it's only Monday nights. So that is why, when you look at your unmet needs report, you'll see meals on there as number three, because if somebody were to need a hot meal tonight, there is nowhere in Camarillo to go. We can tell them about other cities where they can go, but if you have money to go to another city, you're more than likely not going to need a hot meal, you're going to just get it here. So that would be why you see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is public comments on items that are not on the agenda. And I see several cards. I'll call the names in the order that I receive them. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that we have a policy on public comments. We allow each person three minutes. There's a clock that you can see, and I can see a clock too, and there'll be a little light above it when you start speaking, it's green. At the end of two minutes, it turns yellow, and there'll be a buzzer, and then at the end of the next minute, it turns red, and we'd ask you to keep your comments to the three minutes. So the first name I have is Matthew Wayne Ormer, and I'm sure glad you changed your name for this, Matt.
We've always got to mix it up, you know, we're in America. I want to talk about the Village at the Park. You received a letter from the Millionaire Village of the Park Homeowners Board regarding Villa Roselle. Let me remind this city council, Tony, you weren't on board, Jan, you were against it also. A swimming pool was put in on Villa Roselle when they did the Village at the Park. To the left on Willow Glen, there was supposed to be an RV and the parking for that pool. What happened is developer came in, shook you guys down, obviously you allowed them to build houses there. Now there's traffic like crazy, 35 to 50 cars parked there on the weekend, and it's unsafe for ambulances and fire trucks. Now let me remind you what you did in the cul-de-sacs previous to this. Pedestrian, Village Commons, and West Park. Basically, what you did is you read out the curb so nobody could park in the cul-de-sacs. If you remember that, you look it up, you did that. So now, what should happen is there is fire engines can't go by. That whole area should be redlined. You can't have, it's unsafe, fire engine can't go in there. You have to have the same policy. This homeowners association now wants speed bumps and slower speeds, and they said people are doing 55 miles an hour. That's pretty amazing, I'd love to see that, because that's pretty hard to believe, you could do 55 and make it around there when cars are on both sides of the street. So it should be an open, this should go to the people, and the people of the lamplight or mobile home parks should be notified if any decision is going to be made. And let me remind you, you have a policy. If it's too dangerous for cars to travel, it should be read it out like you did in the cul-de-sacs. If it's too dangerous for cars to travel, it should be read it out like you did in the cul-de-sacs. Look at your previous policy. The next thing I want to talk about is Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan called me out. He made a clear example why we need term limits. Mr. Morgan has been unprofessional to me, calling my name out. Yes, I am from Texas, but I spent 23 years in this community, okay? I expect the mayor, the super, you guys are all here council members, he should be told not to do that. It's been going on for years. It's unprofessional. You know something? Behind you is the American flag, the First Amendment, okay? I have a right to speak whether I'm a resident of Texas or I have, I have family members here. This community, I ran for city council. I care about this community, okay? My personal reasons for leaving has to do with my son's medical issues. It's none of anybody's business. I don't appreciate being called out because I'm a resident of Texas. Mr. Morgan and his nonsense with the Fiesta Association and how you guys covered it up and how he knew there was an embezzlement, he should talk. Also, the American Legion, how about the fact that when he ran for office, he put down, he was a veteran, and they told him, don't do that. I can talk about all his dis- discretion in life, but you know something? I ask for respect. When I come here and speak, I have a right to speak and have my opinion. I don't need him opening his big mouth and insulting me from, because I'm from another state of Texas. So I would appreciate a city councilman who say that the city is so well-run that they would take an opportunity and say, Mr. Morgan, you shouldn't do that. Everybody has a right to their opinion. Thank you.
Dan Goldberg?
What he said was a lie. I've never been a.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dan Goldberg. I'm a resident of Camarillo and a concerned citizen. We have a mess of a situation in regard to the 101 freeway during rush hour. This week in the Acorn, they reported that Caltrans is going to turn on metering lights, the Lewis Road on-ramp. I'm speaking tonight to encourage the council and Caltrans to invest in ramp metering lights at Springville northbound on-ramp. I drive northbound three times a week to attend law school at the Southern California Institute of Law. Every day I get to Springville, there's a line of red lights all the way from the bottom of the on-ramp to the top. The merge is a complete disaster. Investing in ramp metering lights now will help the 101 traffic congestion in the future. Please consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Fox to just give a quick answer to that one?
Mr. Goldberg, Mr. Fox is going to give an update right now.
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, the city actually has been meeting with Caltrans to map out what is the, uh, most effective and quickest way that we can move forward with ramp metering throughout the city. And that, not only at Springville, but looking at all of our interchanges. Uh, the good news is Caltrans agrees that, uh, that is a viable, uh, treatment. Ramp metering is also a priority on their list. So, uh, we have their cooperation. And, um, one of the initial steps that's necessary is to look at what equipment is needed at the interchanges to actually be able to activate the ramp signals. There has to be electrical power brought in. There has to be the, the standards of the signals themselves installed. And so we've already hired a consultant who's, uh, in the process right now of inventorying every interchange to see what equipment, and in some cases possible, uh, ramp widening or modifications that would be needed. Once we have that inventory, then we can prioritize locations like Springville where we would expect perhaps the ramps are wide enough. We just need to install the hardware. That can go quicker. Other areas, areas where we may need ramp widening, that would be a longer-term, more expensive solution. So, uh, first step is get the inventory. Next step is to prioritize and then bring to you recommendations on when we can move forward with those projects as quick as possible and as fast as Caltrans will ultimately allow and permit us, permit us to do that. Our expectation is, um, that it'll probably be next year sometime that the first implementations would take place.
But in the meantime, the ones that are there will be utilized.
Again.
Or does that come after?
Yeah, the, um, as the, um, commenter, uh, identified, the two, the only two locations in Camarillo, the ramps northbound and southbound at Lewis are ready to be turned on. And as the news release said, those will be activated fairly soon. Everything I spoke to is in addition to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Bray?
Uh, Terry Bray, 63 Via Centra, Camarillo, California. Um, once again, I am back in regards to the, uh, CHS application that seems to be again delayed in regards to taking care of the outstanding renovations at my home. Uh, the communication, I gave you all copies of what I'm looking at. Uh, the communication I received from Mr. Vacca, uh, the director of, um, uh, community development, uh, informs me that now, uh, that I have a property, uh, health and safety code violation and that, uh, the CDBG funds dictate that needs to be fixed. And I have to get a new scope of work, uh, which requires me to have three licensed contractors come in my home and get, uh, and, and determine what those costs would be, um, which is going to cause me, uh, loss of income because I have to accommodate them during my work hours. I'm a low-income individual as it is. The reality of this, and I'm very frustrated and I'm angry, is that those health and safety issues were created by Habitat for Humanity when they came in my home to renovate my bathroom. I came and asked you people for help. You financed an unlicensed entity that provided an unlicensed subcontractor under the supervision of Habitat, their unlicensed construction site supervisor, and they messed up my bathroom. Those code violations were created by an organization that you authorized to receive federal funding. Those funds are not for correcting somebody else's mess up that you guys provided. I didn't create this problem. I came to you asking for help. I trusted things were going to go well. They went badly. Because you didn't do your homework and you had them come in who messed it up. So I feel now, because of the court situation, I lost that case on stipulations, not based on facts, but on court procedures, that I'm being singled out. I feel that this is retaliation. I feel that this isn't right. I don't think you've put anybody else through this wringer. In regards to not having funding, you had $600,000 of rollover CGBG funds that you took $300,000, created a new account to do a new facade on apartments that you feel look outdated, that people see on the freeway as they go by. That leaves you another $300,000 sitting there doing what? It's not that you don't have the money to make your wrong right. But now the work that needs to be done is worth over $20,000. I gave you a copy of my tax refunds that were just done. I made $23,400 for the year. And now you're asking for me to include the repair of the bathroom in the grant that I'm applying for that's going to take at least half of that grant? You're cheating me out of the renovations that should be done, that I qualified for, and not make me get cheated by having to use that grant to pay for the F-ups that that group did on my home that you provided.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
We'll now go on to, uh, a public hearing. Item A, introduction of ordinance, adding sections to the municipal code pertaining to water conservation fixtures and fittings based upon, excuse me, local climatic, topographic, and geological condi- geographical conditions. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. Renee Mario, our building official, has prepared a presentation for you on this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The city has initiated an ordinance to add section 16.04256 and 16.04.257 to Title 16 of the Camarillo Municipal Code pertaining to water conserving fixtures and fittings based on climatic conditions. Right, right. Thank you. A little background. Last year, Governor Brown lifted the drought emergency, April 4th, 2017. However, this year's snowfall at Lake Tahoe is 20% of normal. Camarillo has received less than 1.5 inches of rain season to date, and that includes yesterday's little rainfall. Out of the last 20 years, 14 were below normal rainfall. This map shows the current drought conditions across California. It's current as of February 20th. And as you can see, Ventura County is still in severe drought. The city adopted a water fixture ordinance October 28th of 2015. All projects that were submitted for plan check after this date and permits issued over the counter are complying with the fixture requirements. The previous ordinance did not allow for exceptions. For example, approval of fixtures which conserve more water than were previously approved. At the last codes, code adoption cycle, this plumbing code amendment was inadvertently deleted. We get the authority to make these changes to the city municipal code and the California Plumbing Code through the Water Code Section 375 and the Health and Safety Code that says the city may make amendments to the code where there are climatic conditions justifying these amendments. The benefit to the city by reducing water consumption through the installation of water conserving fixtures will enhance the sustainability of various water resources available to customers within the city. Just a definition of what is a residential occupancy. That would include your single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, apartments, hotels. And exam examples of non-residential would be offices, warehouse, or stores. For residential construction, the proposed changes are installation of 1.28 dual-flush toilets or single-flush toilets which use less water than 1.2 gallons per flush, sensor-operated self-closing bathroom faucets, and an on-demand hot water recirculating system for brand-new residential units. For non-residential construction, the ordinance would require metered, censored, operated, self-closing, .25 gallons per use bathroom faucets, point-of-use, and point-of-use hot water heaters at each bathroom sink, and .125 gallon per flush floor-mounted urinals. So a little example about how some of these fixtures operate. Uh, the dual-flush toilets, some of them have buttons, some of them have handles. They use currently an average of one large flush, which is 1.6 gallons, to two small flushes, which is 1.1 gallon each. And you achieve an average of 1.28 gallons. The, uh, censored faucets for residential, they operate by having motion underneath the faucet which gives the flow of the water. Once you stop having motion, then they shut off. For as long as there're motion, there's water. Um, they often come with a little handle or knob on the side so that you can control the temperature of the water that's coming out. These are not metered faucets. They do continue to run as long as there's motion. As opposed to the non-residential faucets, these stop after a quarter gallon of water has been dispensed through the faucet. And then you would have to pull your hands away and reactivate them to get more water. On-demand recirculating hot water systems, uh, these are operated by a remote device. A button usually could be wireless or wired, depending on the model. It pushes water through the, uh, line so that at the point it reaches your fixture, you have hot water actually there. So you don't have to run the water to get water at your fixture. Uh, in commercial, it's the point-of-use or Insta-hot water heaters. You've heard them called. So they're right there under the sink. You put your hands under there and you can get hot water. Dual-flush toilets save approximately 67% over single-flush toilets. And in non-residential, there was a, a study that was done at the California State University in Sacramento. And they found out that sensing faucets save approximately 37% of water over manual faucets. Also, through the city's water demand credit program passed by resolution, qualifying residential and non-residential occupancies can receive free replacement .8 gallon per flush, single-flush toilets. The city will probably continue to remain in drought conditions. Uh, Ventura was not spared the county during the drought previously, the rain the previous year. We still were in drought conditions here in Ventura County. And it appears that we're going to continue to be so for quite some time. And water-efficient fixtures could create a sustainable method of conserving water. Doesn't require people to cut back on their water use because the fixtures cut back on water use. So staff is requesting that we read the title of the ordinance and that there's a motion to waive further reading and introduce an ordinance amending the municipal code to add section 16.04.256 and 16.04.257 pertaining to water conservation fixtures and fittings.
Okay, are there any questions, Renee? Mr. Kildy?
Yes, can any resident, let me turn my microphone on here. Yes, can any resident, um, sign up for this program? In other words, even those that have already got, you know, water-saving fixtures, would they be eligible potentially for this program if this is changed?
Uh, this does not affect how that program is operated. I do believe there is a minimum requirement that the current fixture has to meet a certain threshold before they qualify. But it, these fixtures wouldn't change the fact that they, if the fixtures are replacing.
Are more efficient than what, uh, currently is, is on the market or out in people's homes.
Correct.
Mr. Clotzel has something to add.
I don't want to step in front of Mr. Tremblay. It was a related question. It may be tied to what, I'll give an, uh, some information on that. As far as any city water customer is who's eligible for our water demand credit program. As far as the toilet replacement program, it's for city water customers. So anybody in another water service area such as Camrosa or, um, uh, in the, in the Heights, Pleasant Valley and that, uh, they would still have an opportunity. There are rebate programs for toilets available through Metropolitan Water District at, uh, SoCalWaterSmart.com. So.
Well, I was referring to our customers and our district only.
Yes.
You just wanted to clarify.
Maybe I misspoke, yeah. All right.
Mr. Tremblay, did you have something else? Okay. Anybody else have any questions? And this is not just a water program. This is an ordinance requiring these fixtures in new construction or in construction where, uh...
Yeah, additions, remodels.
Additions and remodels and, and all of that. However, if you have a house that doesn't have, these existing houses are okay with what you have.
Correct.
Okay, so I, if there are no further questions, I don't have any, uh, cards. Is anybody here to speak to us on this issue? Seeing no one come forward, I will go ahead and request a reading of the title.
This is ordinance number 1151, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camarillo, California, amending chapter 16.04, Uniform Codes Adopted by Reference of Title 16, Buildings and Construction of the Camarillo Municipal Code to add section 16.04.256 and 16.04.257 pertaining to water conservation fixtures and fittings based upon local climatic, topographic, and geological conditions.
I'll move to waive further reading and introduce ordinance amending municipal code and add section 16.04.256 and 16.04.257 pertaining to the water conservation fixtures and fittings.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. So we now go back to city council, item A, which we didn't do before. Let me ask the council how we're going to do this because two of us have, uh, conflicts on different things. Are we going to take the whole thing or are we going to look at it in parts?
Do you have a conflict?
I thought we just.
I have a conflict with one of your goals, one of your, uh, whatever you call them. Specifically pertaining to, I have a conflict, a legal conflict of interest because I... pertaining to, I have a conflict, a legal conflict of interest because I own property adjacent to a specific plan you referenced. I can't think of the name, Camarillo Commons. And it is mentioned in one of the objectives.
I would suggest we take the others until, and then skip that, over that one.
Why don't we just take the others first?
And Mr. Tremblay, did you have?
Same. Well, I don't own property. I have a potential for a client to be impacted by a goal, which is that same goal. So why don't, that's fine.
Let's discuss the rest of them or do whatever we're going to with the rest of them and then take that one, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay. I'm still trying to, oh, I got to the, I was talking too much. So, could we have the staff report, please?
Yes.
Just for public's information, we had a study session on February...
On February 7th, the City Council held its annual goal-setting workshop at the library. The City Council's goals and objectives for the coming year, for fiscal year 2018 and 2019, have 10 program areas. These 10 program areas are fiscal management, community enrichment, California State University Channel Islands, land use and transportation, environment and resource management, community redevelopment, economic development, community relations, governmental relations, and employee relations. These goals and objectives, as they were, as they were worked on for the workshop, have been put into the document for your final review and adoption.
Okay, so let's start with fiscal management. Is this the way you would like it worded?
It looks fine to me.
The way I remember it.
I think we've gone over it. It looks good to me.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, if it will expedite things, I'd be happy to move to adopt all of those goals, you know, as they're set forth, with the exception of the one area where we recuse ourselves, and that way we can, we can move forward expeditiously.
We could, well, let's ask.
Well, isn't it important to, since we're doing this in public, for the public to know what our goals are? I mean, that's what we've done in the past. I mean, there aren't that many...
This is the only other item on the agenda except for...
Pavement.
Oh, the pavement management plan. Well, it's still pretty early.
You read fast, read them.
Okay.
Fiscal management, the goal, it is the goal of the City Council to maintain sound and conservative financial practices to ensure the fiscal sustainability of the city. And for 2018, 19, we have two objectives under this goal. The first is implement options to reduce long-term pension liability, and the second is to explore feasibility of obtaining library property tax from the library's entire service area. And I think we mean from Camarillo libraries.
Yes. It's a good thing we read this, huh? Camarillo Public Library.
Okay. Under the second one, community enrichment, the goal, it is the goal of the City Council to provide a safe and enriched environment where people can live, work, and play. The objectives are first, to continue to work toward the reuse of the old Camarillo library site. The second is to enhance the community safety through continued emphasis on support of law enforcement, expanded public awareness, and educational programs. A, increase awareness and participation in neighborhood watch program. B, develop and implement appropriate education, enforcement, and assistance strategies to homeless, to address the homeless population, particularly those who have refused services. Three, work with Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District in assessing senior, center, and community recreation facility needs.
It was addressing, not assessing.
I'm sorry, it's addressing, you're right.
We have assessed, now we gotta do this.
The next goal is California State University Channel Islands. It is the goal of the City Council to maintain a close working relationship with the university. The objectives for the upcoming budget year, to first, continue interaction with the university, including its president, in regard to city, university, and student issues such as student services, housing, and facilities. Two, assess California State University Channel Islands' growth projections and possible future impact on the city. The next goal involves land use and transportation. The goal, it is the goal of the City Council to plan appropriate land uses, streets, bikeways, infrastructure, and transit system. The fiscal year 18, 19 objectives are, one, continue to seek improvement of local traffic issues that impact our city. Two, continue to work with Caltrans and Ventura County Transportation Commission to address improvements on the 101 freeway. Three, monitor and evaluate local transit services to ensure compliance with required performance and performance measures. Four, explore possibility of direct transit service provided by city from Camarillo to West County for seniors and disabled. Five, explore the possible improvements to the MetroLink station. Next is environment, resource management.
I think environment spelled wrong.
Pardon?
Environment.
Isn't that what it says?
In the title, I-N-V-I, oh, sorry.
Yep, no, it's correct.
I'm sorry.
Environment, did I read it wrong?
No, you got it. Never mind, sorry.
The goal is to, the goal of the City Council is to provide cost-effective, efficient services to the public while minimizing impacts on the environment. The objectives are first, continue to work on development of a desalinization plant. Two, seek funding for recycled water storage. Three, review water conservation measures to assure the city has the tools necessary to address limited water supply in drought conditions. Community development.
This is where you have a conflict, so skip over that one.
Let's skip over this one and then we'll discuss the rest, if it's all right.
You can read the first one, just don't read number two.
Well, why don't we just... Skip over that one and then you can discuss it while we're...
Well, the goals, the redevelopment goals, I don't think affects, that's just overall.
Only number two does.
If you've read it, it wouldn't hurt you, I wouldn't conflict with you.
Economic development. It is the goal of the City Council to maintain a positive environment for new business, expansion and retention of existing businesses through, through staff assistance, and providing efficient processing of proposals.
Yes?
Are you reading it again?
Well, I'm looking at it grammatically, and somehow I think it needs to be worked on.
When you read it out loud, that's when you feel it, huh?
Yeah, you're either going to do things, maintain, and then everything else is that way, but we've got an "ing" in there. You see what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, before it gets into the budget, I would like, maybe we need to do it now for adopting...
Yeah, fix it now while you're...
So we're going to maintain, and then let's just make that last, provide. Is that okay?
Where's this now? Wait a minute.
It's just a...
It is the goal of the City Council to maintain a positive environment for new business, new business expansion and retention of existing businesses through staff assistance and provision of efficient processing of proposals. Okay, so we get rid of providing and we make it provision of. The objective is to implement economic development strategy. Next is community relations, is the goal of the City Council to increase community engagement and effective communication with the community. The objective is to explore the development of a community engagement specialist position for the city. Governmental relations, it is the goal of the City Council to maintain effective communications with local, state, and federal elected representatives and other local public agencies, including schools, parks, and special districts. And boy, have we been doing that in the last two weeks. The objectives are to be proactive in defending the city's interests concerning proposed legislation and regulatory issues, and second, to increase communications with other local public agencies that serve Camarillo residents and businesses. The next one is employee relations, and the goal of the City Council is to maintain an effective workforce through competitive salaries, benefits, and training. At this point, I'm going to recuse myself for the conflict I've already stated, and I will let the vice mayor read these. And I believe Mr. Tremblay, do you need to state your reason?
I did.
Okay.
You could vote on the ones you just discussed if you were going to vote on these separately.
Madam Mayor, I would move that exclusive of the community redevelopment section, the council approve the FY 2018, 2019 council goals and objectives as just, as just read.
As corrected?
As corrected.
Oh, right, and as, I guess as revised.
As revised, okay. Is there a second? Motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously.
Shoot. Okay, so we are on the community development at this point, and the goal is, it is the goal of the City Council to provide opportunities to redevelopment, to redevelop and develop commercial, industrial, and residential areas to improve services, businesses, and housing, and to deter, deter and alleviate blight. Okay, so we've got a couple of objectives here, and the first one is to develop alternative methods to move forward with housing and non-housing projects without traditional redevelopment property tax increment, and evaluate financing opportunities for instituting such projects. Does that sound okay?
Closest you can get it.
Okay. Good idea, since there's no redevelopment in a state at this point.
Well, the new, new ones they're coming up with might help us some. That's why we're talking, not redevelopment, but it's another name now. Go ahead.
I'm sure it is. Okay, the second is conduct meetings with afflicted property owners, effect, I'm sorry, affected property owners to evaluate interest in revitalization of the Camarillo Commons Strategic Plan area.
And I will move the approval of that one.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor to approve the community redevelopment goals and objectives for fiscal year 18, 19. We do have a second. Hearing no further discussion, please vote. That passes 3-0 with two individuals that were unable to partake in this discussion due to conflicts of some sort.
So did you give away the story while we were gone?
We tried to, but I...
We finished the comments.
We saved it for you and Tony.
Okay. Now I've lost my agenda.
On City Council.
So we're going to Public Works to the pavement management plan, is that right?
That's Public Works, right?
Could we have the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. Principal Engineer Ken Matzouk invited a presentation on this item.
All right, you can hear me through now, all right. Mayor and Council, we have our City of Camarillo pavement management plan tonight. What is pavement management? Pavement management is a tool to make cost-effective decisions by determining what condition our streets are in, what maintenance is needed and when, what the cost is to maintain our streets, what the impact is of deferring maintenance. And pavement management doesn't necessarily do the worst streets first. Pavement management selects streets on cost-effectiveness and focuses on pavement preservation. And I'll describe pavement preservation later in the presentation, too. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't handle the worst streets. It's just that we need to handle them systematically, a little bit at a time. The pavement condition is measured based on PCI, the Pavement Condition Index. The PCI rating for a street is based on things such as cracking, surface smoothness, potholes, surface wear, et cetera. We consider PCI above 70 as very good, 50 to 70, good, et cetera, as you can see on the chart. And as you can all see there, Camarillo's average PCI is 78.
So close.
Now, looking at the inventory of city streets, most of the city streets are in very good condition. It's about 79%. Only 1% of the streets are in very poor condition. And of those streets in very poor condition, most of them will be paved within about a year. The rest should be paved within the next few years that are the very poor. However, there will likely always be some streets that are all in the poor and very poor categories. As time passes, streets deteriorate. And with limited funding, we have to balance keeping many streets in the very good category versus paving a few streets in the very poor category. How does Camarillo compare? Camarillo is doing fairly well with pavement maintenance compared to other areas. Our average PCI is 78 citywide, is the average. Countywide, and that means with all the cities and unincorporated areas included, the average PCI is 71. Statewide, the average PCI is 65. Now, there are cities that are higher than us, however, those are mostly clustered in Orange County, and another city that has pretty good pavement is Thousand Oaks, and theirs is probably similar to ours. I think many of you have seen this slide before. This is a very simplified chart of what happens with pavement deterioration over time. If we wait too long for the pavement treatment, a more costly treatment is necessary. Certain streets or neighborhoods may wonder why their streets weren't done when their streets are worse than other neighborhoods. I'm going to reiterate, the goal of pavement management isn't to treat the worst first. Worst first is a reactive approach, which fixes streets after they've failed, and it's costly, as many of our streets in good condition will deteriorate as we do that. A pavement preservation approach, where we prioritize based on a prediction model and focuses more on the greatest benefit to the street network as a whole, is a more proactive approach. We're trying to catch as many streets as we can while they can be maintained with a cost-effective Cape or Slurry Seal, and that's in this area here, where it's more cost-effective rather than the more expensive area down here. And our pavement management plan. This is the paving schedule we reviewed at a study session in August 2016 as our seven-year pavement management plan. And we review this annually at the CIP study session. A copy of this map is in your packet. The city was broken up into seven areas, and we programmed an annual pavement program of $4 million with uncertain funding at that time, with sales tax measure vote pending. In 2017, funding was then subsequently raised to $5 million using SB1 funding. Now, this map shows where we currently are on our pavement program. We're actually about a year ahead of schedule. The areas shown in black, and you can see a lot of them here and throughout this area, those areas are completed, and we have, we have about four more years before we finish the cycle. The original completion of the cycle was in 2022, however, we're scheduled to be complete by approximately 2021. The Cape Seal treatment that we've been using has been cost-effective, and we've been getting more area done for our money by using that treatment. We can't use it for everything, but it's been a good mid-level treatment. We can't use it for everything, but it's been a good mid-level treatment. And the areas that we've been working on, they seem to be holding up pretty well. We've also had some Camarillo corridor funding that we're going to be doing an overlay with in the current year. All right. Now, let's go over some of the paving treatments that we've been using. Now, the first type of treatment is our overlay paving. This is an example of one of our overlay projects on Mission Oaks near the high school. This is how the pavement condition was prior to paving. This is during paving. You can see the paving machine there and some of the equipment that's there. And this is how the finished pavement surface looks after the overlay. Another type of treatment we've been using more recently is the Cape Seal treatment. And as you can see, the street condition before the Cape Seal is fairly cracked, but generally smooth and flat. This street needs more than a Slurry Seal, but not an overlay. This is where a Cape Seal can be used. Cape Seal involves two treatments. The ARAM, which is the Asphalt Rubber Aggregate Membrane, which is a layer that does most of the work, but has a very rough appearance, and a Slurry Seal on top, which is for aesthetics and to hold the loose rock. And this photo shows a hot rubberized oil membrane being placed first. And this layer is sticky. Then, oil-coated rock chips are placed on top of the sticky oil layer. This can be driven on fairly quickly, but needs to be left in this condition to cure for about a week or so. Loose rocks are swept daily. And after the ARAM is cured, a Slurry Seal is applied on top. This makes the Cape Seal street look generally like any other street that's Slurry Sealed. And after the Slurry is complete, this mid-level treatment brings a street that's way past the Slurry Seal treatment back to a decent condition. It's a fairly economical treatment for us so far. And this is the Slurry Seal treatment that's coming up. This is a street that's prior to Slurry Seal. As you can see, the street condition is fairly good. It just needs a light treatment for some cracks and a few minor patches first. And after the Slurry is applied, as you can see here, the lane remains closed to through traffic for about four hours for a Slurry to dry. Traffic and travel on the outsides lanes, which have already been Slurry Sealed and have been allowed to dry earlier in the day. And after the Slurry project is complete, this is how the street looks. Here's our strategy for the pavement management plan. The pavement rehabilitation budget is about, is $5 million per year. The PMP budget is reevaluated annually during the CIP preparation. And our goal is to have an average PCI of about 80. We're currently at 78. And we expect that the PCI number will fluctuate over the coming years. It'll go up and down. It might go up to 80, might go down a little bit below 78. But what we don't want to see is a continual downward trend on the PCI number. And we anticipate by having the $5 million budget that we'll be able to maintain somewhere around that PCI we've got right now. We're using new pavement treatment techniques, such as Cape Seals, and we continue to look for other cost-effective treatments as well. We have a seven-year plan, and we're currently slightly ahead of schedule. And we'll probably complete the seven-year plan in six years. That's the total. The recommended action is to approve the pavement management plan.
Before I ask for questions, could you go back to the 2018 map?
Okay, let's see if I can get there. That one there.
Okay, now, I'd like you to take out your big maps, because I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I'm going to make sure that if you, do you have a, yeah, go over to the right, to the purple, and right, let's see, there's the green.
Are you trying to get to my house?
I'm trying to get to that. No, you were right there, and you moved it right there. Just put a big circle around that and make sure the end of that street gets covered this year. She claims that in the last 20 years, it's never been included.
And let's make this perfectly clear. It's not that I want special treatment. It's just become a joke around here that I don't get special treatment.
You just get, you don't get equal treatment.
Right. And it has been 30 years, one time in 30 years, so.
Okay.
It's due.
Getting it on the record.
I appreciate that.
Now, are there any questions?
I do have one.
And it can't be about your street?
Not about my street. I wasn't going to bring it up, but since you did, I appreciate the fact that we're now being treated equal. Talk about the poor ones. How do you ever get the poor ones up so we'll get them into where we can maintain it? I thought that was our goal, to never have anybody down there.
We will do them, but over time. We don't put them first. And we'll gradually do them over the seven-year period.
So there's somewhere in this mix, somewhere in this map is the poor ones?
Our goal is to do them within seven years. Sometimes there's going to be more than we can do for the budget we have, so it'll drag on a little bit past the seven years. But our goal is somewhere around there that we would do the poor ones. Many of them will be done within about a year or two right now.
So if they're in an area where you're working, you'll go ahead and do it? Or is it you go through the city and do all the poor ones, because this is a different technique?
As we're working in an area.
As you're working in an area, okay.
If I could add some to that, that there could be the chance at some point that there would be no very poor streets.
That's our goal.
At a certain condition, at a certain period of time. Every day, the street surface is deteriorating. So there is also the possibility, as Ken mentioned, that there will continue to be streets in the poor, more likely in that poor category versus very poor, once we get through this next year or two, when we're through the final cycle. So just that there's no guarantee that we'll ever be out of the very poor condition. That's always a possibility. We do have areas that have, you know, problematic subgrade and other issues that we, you know, do our best at treating as we come through there with an overlay. But we are, again, the PCI at 78 is a very, very good condition for to have a citywide average, which I think Council is very well aware of and the motoring public appreciates also.
Thank you. And thank you for the good work. I mean, our streets are something we're proud of, and we certainly appreciate it. But it would be nice to never have those poor ones, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Tremblay.
Ken, can you go back to the first slide on the criteria? I just had a, yeah, I just had a quick question.
That one, or?
No. Yeah, keep going. It's the textual one.
Which way?
Other way.
That one?
Right.
Okay.
Try to figure out who asked this. You use a, an excellent presentation, thank you. Just a question, is there a weighted criteria that's used, or do you amalgamate all the criteria and make a judgment call? Are any one criteria, let me try it this way. Are any one criteria weighted more than another?
There is a weight, and I guess.
What is it?
Based on traffic. If it's an arterial versus residential, there is some weight placed on the additional traffic on there.
So traffic volume?
Yeah. If it's an arterial collector or residential, there's three categories.
So just to follow up, that would receive more weight than another criteria? I'm just curious, and I don't want to go too far down the weeds on this.
Yeah, and there are those different criteria, and it is, and I'll back up a little bit. It's a predictive model. It's called a Street Saber. It's a very well-known, the county uses it lots of, it actually comes out of the Bay Area. The Bay Area, the equivalent of the VCTC up there requires the areas up there to use this, which they developed, the Street Saber Pavement Management. It's a database predictive model that receives the input of the various criteria, the various arterial collector, different categories of streets, traffic index related to those, volume of traffic. And then you input, do a very intensive, the first step is a very intensive survey of condition out there to build this seven-year plan. So that database predictive model generates this plan. Now, it always has the opportunity to fine-tune for various, you know, situations, you know, that we may face within the city at different areas. And then, of course, we always fine-tune each project that we look at. We develop these areas that we, is our base to go forward with a project. And I believe I've mentioned before, and often relate the information to somebody that's inquiring about, well, when can my street be done? That we always look for opportunities, if we get favorable bid prices, to add in a street or two here or there. And that's where we would look, if it's cost-effective, to add in one of those very poor streets. That makes sense. Let's go ahead and do it now, if the price is allowed.
Any other questions? What are the wishes of the council?
Can I make a comment before we? I just want to say that, you know, this is one effective program. And I can remember in the early '90s, for various reasons, we weren't able to do much of anything to improve our streets. So if you look at some 20-some-odd years, we've gone leaps and bounds in the quality of our streets. And it's not unnoticed. And it's especially noticed to have a customer that moved from Michigan, and he cannot believe the quality of streets that we have here. You can only imagine, vis-à-vis to where he was from. And he is just so impressed with the street quality that we have. And I know it's been all of our goal here to have, every single council member I've ever known, the goal is to have.
Good streets.
Really good infrastructure here, and we're making great strides to keep that.
Kevin, there are places in the county that, when I ran for office, there's places you won't believe how bad.
Madam Mayor.
Many cities, but I'm saying we're in good shape.
Yes.
This is my last year that I get to make, share this statistic. But just to reinforce what you've all just been talking about, and the fact that you have made it a priority to always keep our streets in good condition, because if they ever do deteriorate to a level, it can become very expensive to bring them back to this condition. So you want to maintain the streets in the condition they're currently in. And I'll share, you've heard me share this before, an article I was reading one time on that subject happened to pick a sample city that was very similar in population and number of street miles as Camarillo. And in today's dollars, they were even saying that once you were to bring those streets into a decent pavement index, a good condition, it would take about $5 million a year to sustain that. And that's very consistent with what we're seeing. However, the city that they were using as an example had let their streets deteriorate, and it was going to cost them $80 million to bring it back to a good condition, which that city would never be able to generate that kind of revenue, and it'd be unlikely we could ever generate that kind of revenue in one year. So that's why it's so critical to make sure our streets remain in a good condition.
Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll move the pavement management plan, guides, and selection of the pavement management rehabilitation treatments for each of the Camarillo city's streets. Oh, a motion to adopt, and I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering what you're reading that I don't have here.
Motion to adopt the updated pavement management plan.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Gets us down to information items. And music.
Hello, music, yes.
Information items. City manager, city attorney.
No items.
Mr. Morgan, I'll start with you.
Okay, we have a bunch, but I'll make it quick, because I'm not going to go into detail of the air quality board. It's just too much. We had a long meeting, a long education part of it, for the tri-counties, tri-counties board, which I represent us on that board. You know, three hours of that, you get kind of tired of it when you're up in the Senate House. But first of all, I went to the Air Pollution Control Board, the tri-counties division. And if someone wants to read this stuff about greenhouse gas and ARBs regulations and new things, if you want to read it. And I've also got some things about the airborne toxic control measures that they're looking at in the state of California. Of course, there's our, if you want to see some of that stuff, it's, there's a lot of reading to do. The Water Wise Program we had over in, Iowa had over in Thousand Oaks this time. We listened to, a lot of it was taken up by the Canal Valley Parking Rec and all the things that they're doing to save water. Example, we've done some of that here, too. But you get, you know, walls out here that have, you know, you don't play on those, next to those walls, but they water them. And so there's a whole lot of area that you just cleared out all around, you know, the basins, like you're going to a warning fence. You're playing baseball, and you run to the warning track. Well, that helps save a lot of water. There's a lot of things like that they did. I won't get into all of it, but it was a pretty good presentation. We do have some of that stuff. The park on, what do you call it? The park on Adolfo, near Lewis Road, that little small park? They did some similar things in there to cut down water usage. Okay, next, there was a ribbon cutting at Alice Boutique on Ventura Boulevard. And we had a little run-in with a homeless person there, riding a bicycle, that couldn't see from here to Charlotte. I had to stop him because he was going to run people over. And our police took care of it. I called them to talk about, he was, he couldn't see, he said. He didn't know where he was. And so the police came, they got, it was cold that night, and sent him a voucher. And then they were going to work with him the next day and find out, would he, I asked him personally, would you go into a shelter? A lot of them won't. They just won't do it. Yes, he would. So he can get some help. So the police were going to take care of him. Dave, I think they did that, did not? How did you know about that guy?
Just that you mentioned him to me, I didn't know.
Okay. Anyway, they took care of him the next day, and so maybe we helped someone. Let's see, the Clean Alliance, okay, Clean Alliance program that Tony and Kevin and I are in, we'll be having a meeting tomorrow. But we had a brief meeting by telephone this past week. And it's a long thing. I mean, they explained what they're, basically what we're going to be doing, and all the steps we're going to be taking, and it goes on and on. Tomorrow, we'll get a more detailed version of it. I think Mr. Tremblay's going to be going to LA, which I won't do. I'm going to the one in Ventura, where they're holding it on a teleconference. And so we'll all get that in. Then we had a Chinese New Year. Charlotte did a good job of addressing them at the Chinese New Year. You missed the best part, though, when we moved over to the theater next to, you know, at the high school, fantastic, that's where all the entertainment, a Chinese symphony. People are, I mean, we had two guys, two people that were, what would you call it? Operatic? And then the lady is playing, she's a symphony pianist. But the whole program was fantastic that night. Couldn't do that before. We just had the setup to do that outside. So you did that, the first half of it. Tony, you were there, too, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard about it. I said, Tony's out there somewhere. Then we had a 100-year-old birthday for a gentleman over at the Lutheran Church. Like 50, 60 people were there, and a lot of good words said. That man accomplished a lot. You know, a lot more than was on the proclamation. Let's see, Sister Cities. Sister Cities, that's our sister city, Mexican Sister Cities. We've had a meeting, and now we're working on some things. They'll be coming here in May, and anyone, Charlotte, you'll be invited, Amy will be invited to our dinners and things. They, we're arranging for two shuttles, used shuttles. Because we sent ambulances there years ago. They're still working, okay? These are used vehicles that are going to be gotten rid of, but they.
Better than the bus?
Yes. But we got, we're doing a good job for our sister city there. Teacher of the Month at Camarillo High School. This gentleman is one of those that takes kids who are very limited in English, that are Spanish speakers. And I ask him, español, donde nación? And he's from the capital, Mexico City. And so we talked for a while, and that gentleman does a lot for those kids out there. So that's why he got that award. They voted for him. Saving lives. Now, this is, this is the grant, the federal grant that's put through, well, state, but through the federal, to help drugs, help drug, you know, help get rid of drugs. They get a grant, and they're got a group of them. Dave missed you there. Dave's usually there with me, but he's, he was gone. And they're talking about lock boxes now for new homes, new residences, and also maybe a program like we, we get credit from our water credit out here and get, if anybody wants to go get something that, a toilet that flushes fast and all that. Well, they're looking at a program now, because I said, can't we get some of those free in a program like, and I think that's going to happen. So people can apply for lock boxes for their cabinet, medical cabinets, to lock your medicines in, especially opioids. That's what this is all about. So we're working on that. Then we had the South Coast, oh, that was the Air Pollution Control District I went to, never mind. Done.
Mrs. McDonald. I'll just take a, my mic on. I've talked a lot tonight, so I'll go quickly. I did go to the Chinese New Year. I did have to go to work, so I didn't get to see the part indoors, and I would have loved to have seen that.
That's great.
But as usual, they had a good crowd, and it's, and the library is always. But as usual, they had a good crowd, and it's, and the library is always part of the showcase. And people were in looking at the young adults, too. So we got to show the new part of that. I had asked a while ago regarding a study session or when the council was going to talk about the numbers, arena numbers, and when they had to be submitted. Do you have that calendared yet? Know when we will do that?
We received the updated maps from SCAG, and we're completing our staff analysis at this time. So we anticipate the study session in April, May, or June. Our deadline is October.
October, okay. Thank you. Let's see, what else is on my list? On the berm at Springville, it is now being maintained by?
Part of it's still under construction, and part of it's maintained by a master HOA.
So the older part's the master HOA now, and the
Correct.
New part is full of weeds.
Yes, it's not done, but yes, we're aware.
Well, aren't they supposed to still keep the weeds down?
Yes, we'll follow up on that.
And then the old part, I'm not sure how well they're maintaining. There's a whole bunch of the trees that are in, that have been there a while, that the stakes are blown over.
I just recognize that also, so we're reaching out on that as well. We've followed up on that already.
They don't get on the freeway. They probably don't see that if you're on the other side.
Right, I know. And we did have those pretty horrendous winds a few weeks ago, so we're on that.
You just hate to lose those trees that have been struggling to get a foothold.
I agree. Thank you.
I had something else that came in the mail, and I'm sure you probably all got one, too, in your Southern California Edison bill. And it's a program about getting a 30% discount on your electric bill every month. And I don't know how much our public reads these, you know, it comes in your bill, how much they throw it away. But to me, it probably should have been part of our discussion when we're talking about providing, you know, electricity for our residents at a reasonable cost. So I would like to ask that when we go to roll out this other program, that we explain this, too. In fact, maybe we could have something in city scene. I don't know how long it's going to take before we get into the new Southern California, whatever the new name is. But this is 30% for families, someone who, one to two members in the household, up to $32,000. And so, I mean, they've got some good levels here of being able to apply for discounts. And that means a lot to somebody who's on a fixed income. So maybe we could put something in the city scene or some contact information to let people know about it. And my last one. It kind of goes back to what my, sorry, I apologize for my long-winded talk earlier, but it was kind of my opportunity to say what I wanted, felt like saying. But out of all of the information that was given to me and brought to my attention, and some of the discussion was the people who brought that to my attention, I would like to propose that the city council look at campaign finance reform. And I'm not going to say to you that I think it should be this or that, but I think it's a discussion that we should talk about and see if there's something that we want to do and come to some consensus instead of me saying, this is what I want. I think that's a good idea. And I think it's something that, that would be a healthy thing for the city. Because it's, you know, people, for some reason, they didn't cover a lot on the last election on that. But then once, you know, somebody gets a hold of that information, it starts to percolate. And I think just being proactive and working together to come up with a solution would be a good thing. So that does me for tonight.
Okay. Mr. Kildee.
Just to, let's see, I attended a VRSD meeting. And I also, along with council members Morgan and Tremblay, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Board Orientation Meeting. The only thing I have tonight is, I believe all of us got the final statistics for the Cavalier.
Yes.
And they're pretty impressive. I think it was almost 120,000 people attended. I think there was, if I read this correct, 18,000 Camerio residences.
I get it, but it's amazing.
I think, what, was it about 50,000 residents from Ventura County alone or something? Was it that?
I believe that. I'll get there.
So I guess the point of it is, is that who says entertainment can't make it in Camerio, right? The right kind of entertainment can do really well if anybody out there listening.
As far as I know, we only had three complaints.
I
I mean, one person complained quite often, but three people.
Yeah. And, you know, it was a big success for everybody, so let's keep that in the back of our tickle file here, and maybe at some point, that it might be able to happen, at some point, similar event. It was sure wonderful for the city. I know all of us went and saw it, and some numerous times. And the time that I saw it, it was just tremendous. And it was just a very, very well-run show. And they were so accommodating to people, too. It was amazing how accommodating they were. So others can speak more eloquently on this than I can, but I was very, very impressed with it. And hopefully, you know, downstream, that at least we can get ourselves in the mix on that. So that's all I have.
Your honor, if I might just follow up. Can I give the statistics since I have them in front of me?
Yeah, I don't know where it was. I somehow missed that.
So in summary, the total spectators, 117,957. From Camerio, 18,153. From Ventura County, 54,719. And our 18 is in that number. From spectators outside of Ventura County, 60,199. Spectators from out of state, 2,678. And spectators internationally, 361. Now, I find, did they come to Camerio just for that, or they just happened to be here?
No. The people directly behind me came from Mexico, and they came specifically for that.
Isn't that amazing? 124 from Mexico, 83 from Canada, 34 from China. I think those are the biggest ones. Saudi Arabia, 17.
The Chinese people probably didn't come only for that.
They may have been shopping, huh? But isn't it amazing? One from Panama, from Norway. It's just amazing if all those people came here for that.
My daughter goes to college in LA, and there were billboards down there advertising it. So it's pretty, there is a, the tentacles
All out. Far-reaching. We really should thank staff for bringing that to us, because it was a good
Talking about the Chinese, 134 Chinese, what we're doing here?
Up into your mic, Mike.
The 34 Chinese that were here, a lot of times they'll make that as part of their, they come up here, believe it or not, their council sends them up here to shop at our factory Alamo. And they do. And then they go up and gamble, too, at the chumash. But I'll lay you off, some of these got pushed to this as a piece of entertainment.
Mr. Tremblay.
Well, I really appreciate the conversation on Cavalier, because you look at the multiplier economic effect on it, it is terrific for businesses in the community. So I think those statistics speak for themselves.
They're very welcome. Okay, two things. One is on meetings. I attended the State of the Sea, California State University Channel Islands luncheon. I had a ribbon cutting. I had a meeting for the Economic Development Collaborative Ventura County Board at Meisner Filtration here in Camerio, which is a real treat. That is a first-class facility on Flynn. We had an orientation, like Mr. Morgan and Mr. Kildee talked about. The city is in a new joint powers authority. When we adopted the ordinance, it was known as the, I guess it still is technically, as the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority or LACE, but it will now be renamed as the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California. So we had that orientation session, and I'll be attending the first meeting in Los Angeles tomorrow. And I just want to go attend it personally so I can meet some of the folks down there rather than remotely. I attended the Chinese New Year at the library, which is a great event, and that's sponsored by, I believe it's the Chinese American Cultural Association.
That's right.
Yes.
And they do a terrific job. Three substantive, pretty substantive committee meetings this week. First on the liaison, all with Mrs. Craven, who's still speaking to me at this point. The first one is the liaison committee. We met with Pleasant Valley School District. The second is on the Finance Investment Committee. And then today, we had a lengthy and very productive, I think, policy committee meeting. And I want to really compliment staff on all three of those committee meetings. The second item, so that's it on meetings, enough. The second thing, I received several suggestions like you all do. I received a suggestion at Farmer's Market last week, which I think is a very good suggestion. The concern is that when people look at the website, they have a hard time finding not the agenda, but the agenda materials. So when you go on our website, and I'm used to, I'm spoiled because I get the material right, but when you go on the website, you go to the city, currently, you go to the city council page, and there's a link on that city council page to a page entitled Meetings and Agendas and Public Hearing Notices. And then on that page, there are two entries. The first entry is Current City Council Agenda, and that just has the agenda. The second item is City Council, and that has the agenda and the agenda materials for the next meeting, like tonight's meeting, for example, and videos, et cetera. But a lot of people are not getting to that page. They, for some reason, are not, so they're not finding the agenda materials. So my suggestion would be that staff consider putting the agenda materials, the whole packet that we have, and I am reading online, on the page under Current City Council Agenda, that item, and then just add the words at the end of it and the agenda packet. And that way, everybody has it right at their hands. So they have not just the agenda, but they also have all the agenda materials, and they can follow along. Anyway, something for consideration, because I think it'll make it easier on those folks, and it'll be more transparent for the public. And that's it for me.
Well, thank you all for telling what meetings you attended with me, because it shortens my report, which is kind of lengthy. First of all, there was an article in last Thursday's Acorn that, and this is the annual one, but I want to point it out, because it said, "A Big Year for Prescription Drug Drop-Offs." More than 6,800 pounds of unused medication were disposed of last year at sheriff's substations, and that's countywide. And that's a 23, 22% over the previous year. Now, think of all those little itty-bitty pills. 6,000 pounds. It's mind-boggling to me how much. And those are all, the Thousand Oaks Police Department collected 2,673 pounds. The Camerio Police Department was second with 2,458, 2,458 pounds.
That's amazing.
That's amazing, but I think that means that our residents are really good about this. And we have the drop-offs where they go out to Leisure Village. We also have the, and it's not just at our police department, but any sheriff's. Last year's report said every main police department in the county has the lock collection boxes. I don't know if they still do in the other ones. This one is particular to the sheriff's department. But again, I have to say, and I do believe you need to give credit where credit's due, this, this whole program is now, has a mean thrust of keeping drugs out of the hands of children. But I have to admit, that isn't why it started. Didn't start that way at all. It started out as a no drugs down the drain, because there was a terrible problem statewide with pharmaceuticals going down the drain, ending up in the streams after they got out of the sewage treatment plants, and were harming the environment. And I particularly remember, I was president of the State Organization of CASA, the California Association of Sanitation Agencies that year. And I know staff was really trying to help somehow in getting something done to keep it up. And Roger Pichardo came up with a very simple idea of, let's just put a collection box out. Well, we found out you, there were a lot of state and federal laws that didn't allow it, but I'll give our staff and the people who were involved in the Camerio Office of the Sheriff's Department at that time, and Thousand Oaks always says they did it first, but we did it first. And I think that our staff did a tremendous job, and it's gone now countywide. And our county has got to be some of the, one of the best ones at collecting, especially when you look per capita. Because many counties still believe you can't do it this way, and they're simply not collecting anything. So I'm always proud when I read that. And I always thank the Acorn for reporting it, because nobody else does. So I'm not going to report on the, I had two ribbon cuttings, an Eagle Award, and I attended Sergeant Franchi's retirement celebration. And while I was there, and he gave a lot of good service, 12 years, to the city of Camerio. But somebody at our table asked, gee, I wonder whatever happened to our previous commander, Chris Dunn? So I called his wife, and I said, or I sent her a message, and I asked how he was. And she told me that he's now in Kuwait, but he, his orders are in his hand, and he'll be returning home next month.
Wonderful.
So I know his family's really happy, and he'll be back with the police, the sheriff's department, going someplace. I would like to thank Mr. Morgan. We have a six-day-old baby at our house, and things don't always go as planned or hoped. And so I'd like to thank Mr. Morgan for twice, on very short notice, stepping in for me and attending two meetings that it, as the day went on, it just became obvious I wasn't going to be able to get there. So thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
You just haven't had blanks.
Well, I appreciate it. So this week, I attended the meetings Tony mentioned. I also attended not one, but two Fox Canyon meetings, one Monday afternoon and one this afternoon. And it's been quite a week with meetings, but I have no meetings except ribbon cuttings tomorrow. So I only have one other thing. I guess everybody gets it. I assume I get it, because I'm on the city council. Harrison has a newsletter that they send out. And in today's newsletter, it had what you can say, what you can put in your barrel, in your blue barrel. And this doesn't go along with what we tell residents. And so I, even though we've sent this out twice this year, because the first time it was, it was misprinted, it says that, you know, we specifically say, yes, you can put milk cartons in there. Well, milk cartons are wax-coated cardboard. Milk jugs you can put in. But there are other things. They also are asking that you not put newspapers and
Plastic bags, huh?
Regular papers in plastic bags or paper bags. Just put them all in there. Because the, the newspapers going in paper bags and recycled paper going in plastic bags was when they had people unassorting, what do you call it? Assembly line, where people were pulling it off. Now everything's automated. So those things fall down. If they happen to get through, it costs, it either is considered to contaminate the load, or it costs a whole lot more in labor costs to get it out. And additionally, they are putting things in plastic bags, like those little cord handles, they're considered to contaminate a whole load of paper. So the sale, as I understand it, and I happen to have somebody at home telling me all this about now, who works for the county, telling me about all of the contamination. I was more aware of it, but this reminded me to bring it up. I think we need to either get something else out to our people, or before we send this out again next year, we really need to revise it. It's just plain wrong in places. So that's, that's all I have, so.
Newspapers are okay?
Newspapers and paper are okay, but you don't put your newspapers in bags. You just put the newspapers in the blue bin. And paper, you don't put in plastic bags, like all that scrap paper we have. We just put that in there. Yes?
Carol, one of the things I can't understand sometimes, because moisture, moisture does get into it, okay?
Moisture does get into, if they get into paper, it contamin, not just contaminate it, they're not taking, a lot of moist paper anymore. China, who buys it all from them, are being more choosy now. And a lot of the paper, when it gets that way, they don't take it. So these plastic bags kind of help them keep from getting wet.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you what their flyers Well, I'm, I'm just telling you what their flyer says and what I have been told. So with that, we will adjourn at 9:02.
Oh, gosh, it beat me.